So we'll call the meeting to order. This, as you know, is the Planning Commission meeting of today's date. So I would ask for the roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Badami?
Here.
Commissioner Hudes?
Here.
Commissioner Hanson?
Here.
Commissioner Janoff?
Here.
Commissioner Birch?
Here.
Vice Chair Kane?
Here.
And Chair O'Donnell.
Here. All right, we should say the Pledge of Allegiance, and Melanie Hanson will lead us. As well as being meeting tonight and the other meetings as a commission, we also have subcommittees. And so at this time, I'd like to ask, I happen to participate in one subcommittee today, and there may be others, but Commissioner Hudes and I did, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Hudes to report on the subcommittee meeting today.
Thank you. Earlier today, we had a meeting of the Historic Preservation Committee, and we had hearings on a number of items. The first one was 223 Massol Avenue, which we recommended approval for a minor residential That had been back to us several times in preliminary, and we recommended approval on that one. 15310 Suview Drive, which was requesting determination that the structure has no historical significance, and we were able to make that finding. And then two others that were looking for preliminary review in the process of making some modifications to historic structures, 19 Hernandez Avenue and 236 Edelen Avenue. And then we also reviewed the local government annual report and some guidelines from a national group on preservation and rehabilitation.
Thank you, Commissioner Hudes. Are there any other subcommittee reports? All right, seeing none, this is a time when I will ask for any verbal communications from a member of the audience, which is not on the agenda tonight. You all have an opportunity to speak on agenda items, but in case anyone wants to speak of anything else, we invite that now. I didn't receive any cards on that, so I'm assuming correctly that, do you want to speak on something else? Verbal, okay. What a surprise. Where are you going? While we're doing that, I'll remind people that the speaker has up to three minutes to talk about whatever she wants to. So Angelina Dorner, please start.
Angelina Dorner, proud resident of the Almond Grove. You guys may recall the Shellborne Winchester Project, which did ultimately get approved by the town council with a lot of additional conditions, which we're going to make sure get followed through. However, I just wanted to mention that with the traffic study on that, it was referring to a 975 University as a comparable property. 975 University is a, does not exist. Actually, I found a county plat that said that 975 University is a huge space in the middle of the parking lot, which is why the parking lot seems to be having some extra spaces. Also, the building is a single-story, spread out. The tenants, at the time that they did their evaluation, were half-empty. So I just really questioned, who is looking at this stuff? And I also want to say that I understand expertise. I'm a CPA. If you want to question me on CPA, that's fine. You may have other relevant experience, such as traffic counts or experience driving in and out of your neighborhood every day, that is just as valuable as mine is when it relates to something of relevance. So when I was still looking for 975, I went around, I was searching, I said, this is crazy. This is just crazy. So I found this other building, and I thought, oh, maybe this is it. So I went over there, started looking around the building, and looking in the windows, it looked almost deserted. Windows were dark, tinted, et cetera. Parking lot, not many people there. Went around the back and didn't see anybody, looked in with my camera in the back door, and said, wow, this is a really pretty neat setup. And all of a sudden, I saw someone walking up, and I thought he was coming up behind me. And I thought, oh, my God, oh, my God, he was really coming towards the door. Anyway, this is their, this is how space is used these days in our current technology environments. This is the front door. If a client or whoever comes in, they sit at that desk, they get their brochure, whatever, if they need to see a video, that's fine. Guess what? I said, oh, I just want a picture of the chairs. He was very inquisitive. I just want a picture of the chairs in front of that thing, because that's a great way to set up a trading room with computers. Oh, he said, well, really, people use that for our kitchen. I said, what kitchen? He said, oh, right over there. I leaned in, and I looked, and there was a kitchen over there in the corner. I said, oh, my God. Okay, so everything is in this one space. Space is utilized differently these days. So he also wanted to know then who I was, where I came from, what country I was from, et cetera. And I just want to have one final thing.
Angelina, you've asked for 30 seconds, and I'm going to give it to you.
That's it? Merry Christmas. This is your last meeting of the year, and so Merry Christmas.
Don't use your time. Go ahead. That's it? Didn't use all your time. All right, thank you.
I listened here last year.
All right, so I guess there are no other verbal communications, so we can move to the consent items. We have the minutes of October 25th, the minutes of November 8th, and separately, we have the adoption of the 2018 Planning Commission meeting schedule. Can I have a motion or motions for those matters? Commissioner Badami?
I move to approve the consent items consisting of item number one, two, and three.
And Commissioner Birch will second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. The matter passes unanimously. So our first public hearing is for 16,666 Topping Way Architecture and Site Application. May I have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair O'Donnell and Commissioners. Before you tonight is consideration of a request for demolition of an existing single-family residence and construction of a new single-family residence in the R1 Zone. The subject property is located in a county pocket on the south side of Topping Way and has recently been annexed into the town. The applicant is proposing a 3,907-square-foot, two-story residence with a 902-square-foot attached garage and 394 square feet of below-grade square footage. The project is being forwarded to the Planning Commission due to concerns related to size and bulk, neighborhood compatibility, and garage design. Concerns with size and bulk are related to the proposed residence' square footage being the largest in the immediate neighborhood, and the compatibility of the proposed residence to the homes in the immediate neighborhood. Regarding the garage design, concerns are related to the town's residential design guidelines, which recommend minimizing the impact of garage doors on the street, limiting the prominence of garage doors, and minimizing the visual impact of larger garages. A detailed discussion of these concerns is included in your staff report. The staff report also provides a summary of the consultant architect's review of and recommendations for the project, and the applicant's response to these recommendations. A desk item has also been provided, which includes additional information provided by the applicant after the publishing of the staff report. Staff is recommending denial of the architecture and site application based on concerns related to size and bulk, neighborhood compatibility, and garage design as discussed in the staff report. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available to answer any questions.
Commissioner Badami?
There is a sign at the project location, and it's referring to Architecture and Site Application S-17-011, the application before us, but it's marked "approved" by the Los Gatos Community Development on August 31st of 2017. What was approved?
The approved stamp is a reflect, a reflection of we require, staff requires that the applicant provide us a copy of what they intend to post on the site, a copy of the sign and a story poll plan. We approve those with a stamp, initial them, date them, and send them back. Apparently, the applicant enlarged that and posted it with the approval stamp.
I would just like to say it's a little misleading, because you think the project's already been approved. Just my comment.
Commissioner Hudes?
So I think on this project, staff has raised some, not issues, but the area that we need to be concerned with on neighborhood compatibility. And my understanding is that this is a currently county that will be annexed into the town?
It's, the annexation has already been approved, and LAFCO has already been processed.
Okay.
So it's in the town.
Okay. So my question is, you know, to what degree do we consider county properties when we're dealing with a neighborhood that consists, and particularly an immediate neighborhood, that consists of county, non-town properties when we look at assessing neighborhood compatibility? Things like the number of stories, residential, other kinds of residential design considerations for compatibility. So, you know, how do we consider non-town residences in that?
Sure. I think the simple answer is we look at the immediate neighborhood first and foremost, but I do, staff does recognize the challenge that is presented in these transitioning neighborhoods that are slowly annexing into the town, that have never been under the jurisdiction and subject to the rules, the zoning regulations, and guidelines of the town. This was a project that we worked closely with the applicant on, and ultimately, once the story polls were up and staff performed a site visit, we made the decision that there was enough concern that it wasn't compatible with the neighborhood, but it is, it is challenging.
And I would just also offer that this came up on a project last year, and I think even maybe the year before, which was the same project, which went back and forth between the Planning Commission and the council on High Lo Road. And so obviously, those properties in the county are part of the immediate neighborhood. You can choose to weigh those less or equally based on that fact, but from staff's perspective, that still is the context of the immediate neighborhood, and that's what you would take into account.
Commissioner Hudes has a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up. So that means that you would not necessarily discount adjacent homes because they are in county, not in town?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I had a related question. The applicant did point out that if you look beyond the 225 immediate neighborhood, that there were, he pointed out three houses, I think, that were over 4,000 square feet, which would make them larger than the largest house in the neighborhood, if we chose to look at it that way. And it looked like to me, I didn't map everything to, you know, to the map of what was in annexation or not, because there's only a couple. So I'm assuming that those 4,000 square foot properties were, in fact, approved by the county.
That's correct. There's two homes that I'm aware of behind this property on Marchmont, and I can get you the addresses if you'd like, but they're the ones directly behind that are sharing the property line. And they are large homes in the 4,000 to 3,900 square foot range. They're outside of the immediate neighborhood. We discuss that a lot with the applicant and recognize that there are larger homes. They are outside the immediate neighborhood. How they were built and how they came to be, they're still in the county, they haven't been annexed. And looking at when the homes were built, without getting into giving you all the years and confusing everybody, they were built before those two properties would meet the criteria for annexation. Today, if either of those homes were proposed, they would be required to annex because they would meet one of the two criterion for annexation. They happened to be built just before a home on, a little bit closer to Edgewood, I think it's Edgewood, before the Englewood, before that one was annexed in and built. So we think it's just sort of a timing issue that they were built, they were under county jurisdiction, they weren't close enough to an annexed road, and they weren't sharing a property line with an annexed property, so they were built under county jurisdiction.
Okay. And so that explains kind of how they came to be. I had a second question, if it's all right. So the applicant was pretty clear about, and we'll hear from the applicant, about wanting to achieve a certain square footage. And did you discuss with the applicant other ways, including increasing the cellar area and whatnot to achieve their square footage?
Yes, there, the many options were discussed to try to assuage our concerns, including locating some of the square footage below grade and related to the garage, eliminating the, I all refer to it as the third garage bay, even though there's two bays, but the single car garage bay, and the applicant chose to proceed with the current design.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Badami?
The two homes in question on Marchmont, when they were built, do you know if it was brand-new construction at the time that gave them a two-story home, or maybe when it was built years ago, that it was a one-story home that was converted to a two-story home? Do we have that information?
I'm sorry to interrupt. No, we don't have that information. They were under the jurisdiction of the county, so we don't have any records. We simply have the build date of 2006 for both homes, and the neighboring property's annexation date looks to be 2016. So, and then the next one behind it, which wouldn't qualify, was in '04, but they were under county jurisdiction.
Thank you.
I think we're all aware of the fact that you can tell a county home, because it never quite fits in with the neighborhood. It's always much bigger, and that we apparently will get past now with the annexations, but if you go down the street and saw a large home, you said, oh, that's in the county. We know why they didn't pay much attention to what was going on. Okay, Vice Chair Kane?
Along these lines, not entirely on subject, the two Marchmont houses we're talking about, 16685, 1667?
Correct.
Yeah, they're big, and they're county, but next to that, I'm looking at Exhibit Six, 16709, Marchmont?
Yes.
It's gray. Does that mean it's town?
It is town. It was annexed in 2016 and shows a livable square footage of 2,257 in single-story, based on the assessor. That may, that, I'm sorry, that information's not accurate.
Mr. Mullin, that house is under construction. It's as big as the other two.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if in the town, how did that, I'm just curious, how did that, I walked by all three of them, there was no supervisor on site. Our conditions say that they should be. I want to know what the square footage was, because it's bigger than the other two on Marchmont, or so it looks.
We don't have that information. We don't go back into a history of all of the approvals. We can get that information.
It's under construction, so I thought it was a new activity.
Yeah, so the other is what the, that streetscape compared to the Topping streetscape may have different parameters that led to
You'll take a look at it.
...a house being approved there.
One other question, please. A number of the reports talk about the inability to provide shrubbery on the property line because of drainage or pipes. When I was there, there was a storm drainage running seemingly between 16685 Marchmont and 1667 Marchmont. I couldn't find it on Topping Way, but on the other side of the street, there's a cyclone fence, which I presume was put in by the county, and there's a tunnel covered in concrete. Is, I don't understand why they can't plant trees on that zone unless what? That's a torrent of water going through there?
There, so the easement area in that channel, it's a channelized creek, I believe, is subterranean, it's in a 60-inch pipe on the subject property. Across Topping, it's daylight, so that's why you see the concrete channel. The reason they're not allowed to plant trees there is the easement language does not allow for trees to be planted. It does allow for landscaping, including plant shrubs and smaller items, and it's not allowed to have any footings for fences, so what they're trying to do is protect the pipe underground.
And I was surprised, because currently there are trees
Sure.
and shrubs.
Sure.
And I thought it was going to be a clear view, and it's not clear at all. If those guys are there, why we can't, why can't we add more?
Presumably, those were planted without some sort of permission, and you don't need a permit to plant a tree. Under a permit process, when we look carefully at a title report and look, dive into the language of the easements, part of the town's job is to enforce those easements if we have clear direction on what they allow and not allow.
Are you saying those trees are going to have to come out?
I'm not saying that, no.
Okay.
You may be saying, however, that we could not require that as a condition, since we know that they're not supposed to be there, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any cards, which I think is wrong, because I assume there's an applicant here for this proposal, and if not, it'll be a short meeting on that point. So no one is here as the applicant for, you're not the applicant, I know that.
Sorry, I just had to.
We may, you may not even get to speak if I don't have an applicant.
Yeah, I don't see the applicant in the room.
Okay, so all that talk for naught. What, what I, well, I'm going to assume they're late, but that means they're going to really be late, because we're about to move into another matter, which, as you all know, will take some time. So the next matter we have is item five.
What are we doing, giving them time?
I'm not giving them anything until they come, and if they come, and then we'll see. But we're going to go ahead and move on to 401 to 409. They walked in? We're just about past your matter, if you're here for the prior matter on Topping. Somebody just walk in on Topping?
Yes.
Okay, well, we've now had a bunch of discussions, which you were not here for, but we'll be glad to go ahead and start if you submit a card showing us who you are and what you want to speak about, and if you do it promptly, so we can move on. We do start at seven?
He's on the bench.
You can fill it out after, if you'd just like to come up and start. So what I'll ask you to do when you get up there is just give us your name, and whether it's you or whether you represent the property owner.
Yes, my name is Dennis Norton. First of all, I want to apologize for being late. I was under the impression that we, the hearing started at eight o'clock, that's what I stole, so I apologize.
Well, you're here, and that's good, so go ahead.
Yeah, okay. I apologize. I represent the Arthur Lynn family, who owns the property and has owned it for the last year.
Where is your office?
My office is in Capitola, California. I'm a building designer. I do land use processing. I've done that for 35 years.
Okay, we have your name on some of the plans, so thank you.
Okay, good.
So you will have 10 minutes.
Okay.
And then anyone who wants to speak on, will have up to five, yes, five minutes, and then you will have a concluding of five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Again, I don't have any cards for anyone else on this matter.
Okay.
But perhaps have one now.
As everyone knows, this is a rapidly changing neighborhood, where it's been annexed from the county into the city, the city of Los Gatos. And it's because of the application through, LAFCO never went through a full annex in that area, it's kind of being done piecemeal. It's not good planning, but it's what we have to live with, I guess. This neighborhood is unique, and in that, it's been built through county standards, not through the city standards. There's only, there's only four residences on that street there that are actually in the city limits. The rest of the houses are, including the four on the street there, almost all of them have gone through the city of Santa Clara's planning process and also in their design criteria. It is now being turned over as everyone who comes in for an application, like we are, to county standards. And so it's real difficult to apply your standards for us in neighborhood as to what has been applied to the county and the regulations that we, that had, that created this neighborhood. This proposed house, an adjacent house to the right of the home, the rest of the street are in the county and are subject to the county standards of potential, potentially being annexed. It's very difficult to determine what style of pattern design for the neighborhood is and what it will be in the future. You go one street away at Marchmont, and look at Marchmont as compared to what's happening with Topping, where it is in the county, and there's a number of houses, larger homes being built in that neighborhood right now. The issue of height and mass. Yes, we have reduced mass by lowering ceiling heights on upper floor and lower floor. The three-car garage issue, this is, this is the largest lot on the street. It has the largest frontage on the street. Only, the only other house on the street, the city, within the city limits, the house next door has a three-car garage, and that was, that was issued through your building permit process. That was not the county, and they have a three-car garage next door. The size and mass of the structure, there are two-story, there are two-story structures in front of us and also two of them to the rear of it, so we're surrounded with two-story structures. All the three of those are in comparable size to this house that's being proposed. We are playing by the rules, and we've been in process for six to eight months. We fit every one of your zoning criteria, every one of your setback requirements, your height requirements, your massing requirements, we fit into all those as prescribed by your own zoning ordinances. We have made numerous adjustments. We have made numerous adjustments to the house in size and scale and exterior as required by staff. As staff, we've made those requirements. Also, we've made adjustments, we had a neighborhood meeting, in which, by the way, we have full support of the neighbors that are on Topping Avenue, our surrounding neighbors, and we made some adjustments for them during that We ask for no exceptions to your rules. We can, this house abides by all of your rules. Again, we are the largest lot on the street, and yes, we have designed the largest, the largest structure on the street by 150 square feet. It's 150 square feet from the property in front of us, but it's the same size as the structures behind us. We're requesting a three-car garage, because we feel that a house his size warrants having storage of three cars inside. As you well know, most people today, they park one or two cars in the garage, but with as many toys they have, it's better to have them inside of a structure than outside. We're not asking for anything that is not already being granted to our neighbors on Topping Avenue, and in Marchmont by the city or the county. Whether we stepped or not, that is part of our community. Marchmont is part of our community. As you've probably driven down the street, you'll see the number of developments that are happening on that street there, and all of them are comparable in this size. This one will be a pleasant improvement to this neighborhood, and the neighbors on, that surround us agree to that. And you did see in your book, the ones that have signed on, is that they support the project. That's what I have to say, and we appreciate your support. Thank you very much.
We'll see if there are any questions. There are some questions. Commissioner Hansen, pardon me. Commissioner Badami?
Staff is recommending a denial, and the town architect also has issues with the application. So when you mentioned following all the rules, we do have residential design guidelines, and there are issues with the garage design, where they're recommending that you limit it to a two-width garage. So when you say that you've got a three-car garage, you actually have a four-car garage, correct, with the tandem parking?
There's one tandem. Yes, there is.
Okay, so you actually have areas for four cars, not just three. And it may be an issue with the fellow commissioners, where we might want to follow staff's recommendation in regards to limiting the width of the home, because it does appear massive.
Okay.
Would that be something that you could work on, if it meant an approval, following the guidelines, with perhaps decreasing the width by having a two-car garage, knowing that with the tandem parking, you actually still have a three-car garage?
With the commission's wishes, yes, we could work on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. And I just wanted to ask a question, so that you could have the benefit of a conversation that occurred before you got here, which has to do, because I think a lot of this will hinge on neighborhood compatibility. And since the home is annexed and is part of the town, the question I had for staff was, you know, to what degree do we consider county residences in looking at neighborhood compatibility? And basically, the answer I got was that they should not be disregarded, that the county was part of the neighborhood, and therefore, they may have different, they have different rules, but they should not be disregarded. So my question is, was that your understanding, as you did the design, that despite the fact that some of the immediate neighborhood is county, you needed to comply with the, with those county homes as part of the immediate neighborhood?
I understand your guidelines, where you're asking, for instance, the three properties across the street, and two to the left, two to the right, and to be compatible with those properties. I understand that's the guidelines. The difficulty is here, is that you've had no process in dealing with any of those structures. In other words, compatibility, and that subdivision there was built out mostly in the 60s, maybe early 70s, and it hasn't changed much since then. If you look at Marchmont, you can see what's happening too, in the same neighborhood there. There's numerous changes there. So we, there's not a lot to, for us, assuming like good design, too. And it is a mixture of, it is a mixture of one-story and two-story. The two-story house right across the street from us is at 3,750, which is 150 square feet around. So there are larger homes right in that area. It just so happens that there, where this house is situated, it is the biggest lot. It is the biggest frontage, and that it warrants a bigger home than what has adjacent to the left and the right, I think.
Sure, thank you.
Did I answer your question? I'm sorry.
Yeah, you did. I just wanted to make sure that you had a similar understanding in terms of that county homes would be taken into account in neighborhood compatibility.
Yes, it would. Thank you.
And I have other questions, but I'm going to let my other commissioners go, and then if there are other questions.
Are there some questions? Commissioner Hansen?
So I wanted to ask one more question about the neighborhood compatibility. So I assume you've read the, our staff report, you know, and I know you're aware of the 225, there's the 22, and then the 5 across the street. So, I mean, based on just what you said, I mean, the majority of the houses in the immediate neighborhood, as defined by our residential design guidelines, are in fact in the county, and you would be the largest one of those homes. And instead, you're telling us to look at another street, which I understand it is the next street over, but, you know, our residential design guidelines are pretty clear that we start with the very immediate neighborhood, and, you know, and we don't, we don't judge residential architecture and site applications based on the same criteria that the county would. So I guess I'm just wondering if we can't come up with a way to make this, you know, smaller neighborhood. I don't know what the rest of the commissioners are going to do, but right now, you know, according to our staff report, you are the largest house in the neighborhood, even if you're telling us that there's other ones on the next street. So I hope that's something that, is that something that you're willing to discuss further?
I don't, I don't think, besides maybe the garage issue, that the house is going to be out of proportion from what's in that neighborhood. Again, across the street's a large house. Behind us are two houses that are same size. So we're, you know, in judging compatibility, I know that you just design around, you want to design around the ones that are immediately next to you, but that, that isn't the whole community. It's also sightline in every direction. But, but it's difficult for us to design something that has been set to county standards since the 1970s, and they're all, some of them are small, single-family. There's been a number of approvals on that street, both by the county and the city, of larger homes. It just happens that this house, by 150 square feet, is larger than anything that's adjacent to us. So I don't know if I answered your question.
Of which almost all those houses are county houses, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. Now, I had another question related to the garage. I think you gave us this Exhibit 10. It has a picture of the different houses, and how many car garages they have. And although driving around the neighborhood, I could see there was a couple of other three-car garages. It's not common. And then this drawing has only one three-car garage, and that's the one that's proposed by looking at Topping Way. So am I missing something? Because there was mention of many other, you know, a number of other three-car garages, and I'm not seeing it on Exhibit 10. Maybe it's on the next street over, or maybe it's further away than...
I think on the full length of the street, there's three or four that have three-car garages. The one, the one in particular, which your building department approved, or building and planning, is the one next door. That was approved under, under the city's regulation, is a three-car garage, adjacent to, right next door. So we're not asking for any more than was offered there.
And, but, so, and then I just confirm, I had noticed the same thing that Commissioner Badami did confirm, though, that you really do have a four-car garage. It's just that the very, the frontage of it has three bays for, but you actually have a four-car garage.
Yes. Yeah.
And that's needed for what?
Toys.
Okay.
That's, that's what I see people doing today in my life. People have, they park one or two cars in their garages, and they have toys. You know, that's, yeah.
The, our residential design guidelines are pretty clear on this garage issue, that to minimize the prominence of the garage doors to the street. Did you consider any other designs, you know, maybe turning the garage, you know, so that you weren't looking at the garage doors, or, I know you made an effort to reduce the width of the driveway, but did you consider any other layout where the garage wouldn't be so prominent on the street, looking at three doors?
We did, and, and again, we're open to that discussion. It would, it would reduce the width of the house probably by 12 feet, something in that range, if we, if we took that off of there.
Okay.
It gives further setbacks. And I want you to note, on one note also, that, that this house was intentionally wedding-caked. What I mean by wedding-cake is it steps in. And the reason for that is, and you have a shadow study in there, that it meant, so we didn't shadow any of the surrounding residences, and the shadow study shows that. And so the mass of the second story is brought into the middle of the structure. Yes, the third car garage is, is, I can hear a concern.
Okay, and then I had one final-
Let me stop you for a second. You're having a series of questions, but I think we'll have to do that.
I'll let other people ask, yeah.
And I'm going to come back to Commissioner Hudes in a moment, but I just wanted to ask a question myself. Your clients have owned this property for approximately a year?
Yes, they have, uh-huh.
And you were aware, then, when you designed this house, you would have to design it to the town's ordinances, not the county's?
Into the process, I learned that, yes. Remember, it was, the property was just annexed last month, two months ago.
It wasn't annexed in 15 minutes. It's a process that takes some time, and I assume that was not kept a secret from you.
Oh, no, absolutely, sir.
So you knew that eventually it was going to be annexed before you could build?
Yes.
So you knew that when you built it, it would have to comply with Los Gatos's regulations, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, Commissioner Hudes, you have some questions?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. You know, I skipped the vice chair, but I didn't see the hand. I'm sorry. Did you want to say?
It sounds like we're getting, it sounds like we're getting into comments rather than questions, and I'm going to hold my comments for later.
But we'll all really pay attention to that comment. So Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, I had, I had two questions about your, actually, one question about your correspondence. And this has to do with understanding the lot size. On the, on the letter to Mr. Cannon on April 25th, 2017, Exhibit 9, Exhibit 8, we talk about the three-car garage issue. So this has come up for some time. And there's a statement that says that this is the largest lot on the street by 4,000 square feet. That's, that's quite, quite a substantial number. In the staff report, it says that the property is 552 square feet larger, which is correct.
I think staff is correct on this, sir.
Okay, so it's closer, it's larger, but it's closer to the size of the other.
The majority of the streets, majority of the houses, excuse me, the lots on that street are 10,000 square feet. There are a few that reach up into 13 or 14. This is the largest one on the street, though.
Okay. And then the other thing was about the neighborhood itself, and I appreciate the work that's been done to look at the garages as well. And for me, it isn't about the number of cars. It has to do with the residential design guidelines that talk about minimizing the front width of garage structure on the street. And so it's helpful to understand how prevalent that is in the neighborhood. But there's also a statement about lowering the floor-to-ceiling heights on the first and second floors. And I'm trying to understand whether that's consistent with other homes in the neighborhood as well. What's your sense about building height and floor plate height, and whether that lowering is consistent, or is that not consistent with the neighborhood?
Almost every house that's built today starts with nine-foot plates. It used to be eight-foot for track houses. They've gone away from that. Almost everything is at nine feet. We started out at 10 feet. We lowered it a foot on both levels. So we did, we looked to lower the profile. We went down to 10 feet on the lower, and then nine feet on the upper. So we took two feet off the overall height on this. Do I think it's standard? I think it's standard to the industry, and that's what you'll see on a regular basis.
Do you feel it's compatible with the neighborhood as well?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Janoff?
Excuse me, one more question regarding the garage. This is a very large lot that broadens toward the back of the lot. So when you're looking at it in the front elevation, it looks as narrow as the adjoining properties. And so the enlargement of the property is somewhat invisible to the street view. Did you give any consideration, since there is so much more space in the rear of the property, to putting the garage at the rear of the property?
Yes, we did consider that. And also in consideration to the neighbors that you're aware, we're actually at the same, if you look at, we're the same setback as they are. They're at 41 feet from the property line. We're at 41 feet. And so anything pulling it back would be, I think to them would be a privacy issue. And so we felt to pull it at the front. And also, it also creates, when you do that, more impervious areas, which is not a good green building tactic today. The shorter the driveways and coverage of the lot, the better, much better for the buyer as far as percolation and, and...
So just a follow-up. You considered it and discarded that because of the setback? I'm not clear where your 41-foot setback is.
We, we used, we measured and came up with the surrounding neighbors, what their setbacks were.
At the rear setback?
At the rear setback, and we came up with doing that, this house at the same setback, because their 41 feet were 41 feet.
So, so just a follow-up, if I may. The garage, per se, doesn't intrude into someone's visible setback, because you're, that's not living space. You don't have windows looking down into adjoining properties. Did you discuss with the adjoining property owners the notion of placing the garage at the rear of the property?
No, I never discussed. We're, I didn't have that kind of contact with them. But I did take them into consideration in the design of the lot. And again, we get to the three-car garages, so I'm open to discussion on that. If that reduces the mass, we're open to discussion. You know, although we do feel that houses will, in the future, you'll see a number of them in that neighborhood that are going to ask for a three-car garage, and if that's your standard. What happened was, is that we looked at the house next door that was granted by the city. The city granted a three-car garage adjacent to us. It wasn't the county. It was the city that did that. And so I'm not asking for anything that somebody else hasn't enjoyed in that neighborhood.
Let's see, I lost track there for a minute. I think it was Commissioner Badami was next.
To further reduce mass, would you consider lowering the ceiling height in the first floor level to nine feet as well? Since you said that's kind of the standard. Thank you.
Okay.
All right. Commissioner Hudes, you have some questions, I think? No, okay. Commissioner Hansen?
I wanted to go back to the, some, the correspondence we got from the neighbors. So I saw that you had responded to at least the neighborhood that was directly behind, at least in terms of writing a letter to, you know, say, basically, they also have a tall house. But, but in looking at the information we got, it looked like all the neighbors that you met with were actually on Topping Way. Maybe I didn't read that right, but three, the three letters we got that were in opposition were on Marchmont. And so I'm, since you're asking us to consider those in the neighborhood, I find it a bit ironic that the three letters that most violently oppose your project are actually on Marchmont, not on Topping Way. So what, what, normally, in a situation like this, the applicant would meet with the neighbors, and, and I know you met with the people on Topping, are you willing to go meet with these people on Marchmont that have these big concerns and very large opposition to your project? Because, you know, in terms of continuing forward, if this got approved, I mean, whoever lives there is going to have to live with them as their neighbors. Would, are you willing to meet with these people?
Absolutely. And my name's been on the board for them to contact me for the whole time. We did notice the whole, the whole block. We noticed a block. Who showed up at the thing? One of the neighbors to the rear wasn't even living in there at the time. It was a new neighbor. So at the time, we had the neighborhood meeting, that they were not, they were not occupants of the neighborhood. So, you know, we're as exposed we can be, because all the posting that we do all the way through has my name and my phone number along there. Anytime I would feel the call, I, to their letters, I've written you and corresponded to them, and I have more correspondence. I don't want in any way to pick a fight with the neighbors. We, what we're asking for is what they already have. That's what we're asking for. That's, you know, and, and here's another thing that you have to realize is, is that we're not on the same level as that street. Their houses are actually five feet higher in elevation up here than we are. So should I go talk to them? I'd be happy to do that. I mean, I'd be, that would, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, that was some, my question is, if you're willing to talk with these neighbors, because, I mean, that was the majority of the opposition that we got from the community was the- Well, that was some, my question is if you're willing to, to talk with these neighbors, 'cause, I mean, that was the majority of the opposition that we got from the community, was the people on Marchmont. And you said you've already noticed, you've noticed the people on Marchmont, in addition to the ones on Topping.
We noticed the whole block when we did it, then we had, we, for, for a meeting, and we had, a couple of people on Marchmont showed up. But the, the majority, what was important to us was your criteria, that the two people on two sides and then the three people across the street. All, all but one of those showed up. Actually, one of them was represented by, by an architect. And he asked for changes in the plan, and Sean can vouch for me, that, that we made the changes that they, they asked for. As to with the city architect, we, we conformed to almost everything that he asked for, or corrected everything.
So I, I wasn't asking you about the architect, thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
Are there any speaker cards?
There's one now. Angelia Dohr?
I just wondered if we wouldn't benefit going ahead, doing that, allowing the, the applicant to respond, and then we could also ask staff questions as part of our conversation.
Let me just say this, I think we only have one question left, maybe I'm wrong, but Mr. Badami has been waiting patiently. So after Commissioner Badami asks her question, then yes, I will follow your advice.
I'll be quick. Privacy seems to be a big issue in the rear yard. So would you be amenable to locating the second-story sill heights to above eye level? With the exception of the one-bedroom window that is needed?
I'm gonna answer straightforward, no, and I'll tell you why. It's our south exposure. You can't have a house without south exposure. And this requires, and if you, we measured the glazing on the two houses behind us, and we measured the one on ours, and we have that statistic, you have it somewhere in your file. They have more glazing looking towards us than we are proposing towards them. So in other words, the privacy thing works two ways. We have less glazing on our, on our upper story than they do. They will never, ever see the lower story. The lower story cannot look from their, from that, this is an eight-foot fence between the properties. We're not invading their pri- privacy at all. And we made a consideration of the setback of the buildings, the glazing, the glazing is minimal right now for what would be required on a south exposure on those bedrooms up there. And we do sill heights, we, we also have to deal with, with, with fire access, which requires sills at a certain height. So I, we're not willing to, to make that change, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, what we'll do now is we will go, thank you very much, she'll have a chance to finish in a minute.
Thank you.
We have three speaker cards, so I will first call them in sequence. Angelia Dohrner is first.
Hello, Angelia Dohrner, proud resident of the Yomme Grove. We've been here before. The last couple of years, we've seen a couple of projects which basically have the same storyline and the same concerns of the town, the neighbors, and the developer and/or homeowner. And I just wanted to, especially that one that was most contentious up on Hilo, oh my god. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that last night at the town council priority setting meeting, which was a preliminary meeting that you may or may not know about, one of the items on the list had to deal with annexation initiatives. And I know you may not be able to consider what doesn't exist tonight versus tomorrow, but I wanted to make sure that you knew. And I was unclear, actually. Joel may be able to provide some information on the impetus to go ahead and annex everything right now, instead of just the requirements that we have that when you develop, so you know, oh my goodness, you're one line on ours, and, and I mean, that, and this is what's happening. It's just, okay, one property line calls for this, and then the other three don't count anymore. And so I just wanted to mention that, there was a discussion about that last night. I think it's important for everyone here who cares about this, and cares about this project, and how it might affect their neighborhood in the future, and how it affects their neighborhood now, might look into this and decide if it's something that they want to push forward with the town council about setting a priority. And I just think that would be very useful. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have, and I'm not sure I'm reading the last name correctly, you can correct me if I'm wrong, Karen Kraus? Okay.
Hi, my name is Karen. I am the homeowner in the property on Marchmont that was shown previously by the developer. And we did purchase the house earlier this year, at the, in the springtime. I've written two letters, I think you all, I'm sorry, I haven't attended these meetings before, so I don't exactly know how the process works, but I think you have those letters, it sounds like, and have had an opportunity to read through them. So I'm not gonna go through them in detail, but I did just wanna highlight a few different things. In particular, what I've heard tonight. So we are very disturbed about the development on Topping Way. I feel like what I'm hearing today is actually very misleading, because I am not aware that, I mean, certainly, we were never notified about this development, about any sort of meeting. We talked to various neighbors, you know, as you know, there are other neighbors on Marchmont who have written letters. They have indicated that, you know, they, they were not aware or made, ever made aware of any meeting. And when I found out about this development, honestly, I was, I was pretty beside myself, knowing that we had just purchased this home. And I went to talk to the city planner and came in and expressed my concerns, and asked, how do I address this situation, again, not having gone through this before? And what I was told was, the best thing that you can do is, you know, write a letter, express your concerns, and then show up at tonight's meeting when this meeting would occur, which I did. And I, what my understanding was, is by writing these letters, that was putting the developer, who, you know, is the person who is knowledgeable generally about these processes, on notice that, hey, there are neighbors that have concerns, let's address them. We're a community, we bought into the area after living in Los Gatos for the last decade, because we like the community, quite frankly, and we like the neighborhood, and, and those relationships are very important to me. And the last thing I want is a confrontational relationship. I would have much preferred to have an open dialogue about this, this development and work towards a resolution. But I felt like, you know, I felt personally that the developer knew, they, they had the benefit of these letters, they understood our concerns. They never once, not once, approached me and, or, or my husband to talk about the development and to address our concerns. And so I feel to, for someone to stand up here and say, you know, we've done everything we need to, feel free to come speak with us, is very misleading. I mean, I'm a homeowner, I bought a house, I spent a lot of money on it, I spent a year looking, it was every weekend of dragging my kids around. And I, you know, I tried to do exactly what I was told to do, to address my concerns. So that's number one. Number two, to just make a comment-
Let me stop you. You have three minutes, you've now used it, but I'll give you another 30 seconds if you can wrap up.
Okay, sorry. Okay, so just, you guys can look this up yourselves, but the house next door that's being built, you're right, I think is around equal in size. But I, I believe almost 2,000 square feet is going to be in a basement. So if you really kind of look at it and compare apples to apples, it's, it's a very different house. And then, you know, I just feel like, there's just, there's so much. I mean, this house is gonna, it has a lot of windows in the back of it, it's gonna stare right into our yard. I have three younger kids, I mean, there, I have that concern now. I, I have the issue with this storm drain easement, which, you know, we can't, we've been told we can't do anything with. We've been told that there, nothing can be, no permanent structures, no trees can go there. And this is really an invasion of our privacy, and you're hearing tonight, you're all hearing tonight, that, that the developer is opposed to even changing the type of windows that are there, you know, to, to be accommodating. Like, I feel like there is no accommodation, and the house directly across the street from us, which was just built, 10 seconds more, which was just built, has those really, really high windows, and it's southern-facing, so I'm not really sure why that's an issue.
All right, there may be, there are some questions, so if you just stay in there, you'll have more time to respond. Vice Chair Kane?
What is your address, please?
16685 Marchmont Drive.
You wrote these lovely letters without a name on them. I wanted to make sure that was you.
I didn't really think that the name was relevant, more so the property location, because I figured that's what's really the key point here.
Well, it helps when I know the speaker wrote the letter that we've read, so I might have questions on the letter.
Sure. It's Karen.
Good letters, I appreciate your concerns, they're pretty clearly stated. And thank you for the letters.
Commissioner Badami?
What do you envision as a resolution, a one-story home? Because if it's a two-story home, you're gonna have windows on that second story. And it appears that some mitigation for privacy is going to be rather difficult. So what do you envision as a resolution?
I mean, my ideal resolution would be a one, a very nice luxury one-story home with a very large basement underneath. If we didn't have this issue of the storm drain easement, and we could have, you know, tall, tall, mature trees there, that would be one thing. That would help shield and serve as a barrier and, and, you know, from, from our privacy. But I, I actually, you know, had recommended, maybe could we pursue moving the drain? And it sounded like that was a complete no-go, for a variety of different reasons.
Thank you.
Commissioner Birch?
When did you purchase your home, approximately?
I'm sorry, when?
When did you purchase?
Yeah, so I think we went into contract, I wanna say it was around May 15th, we closed in June.
Can I ask a follow-
12th, maybe? June 9th, June 12th, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact day.
June is fine. So from June until now, you received no notification of any meetings or any outreach from the applicant?
Zero.
Then just one follow-up with that. So in discussing then with your neighbors, as you were settling in and you did learn of this application, did any of your neighbors indicate when the meetings had taken place with them, or if they had heard of any?
No, they, no, actually, I didn't find out from neighbors. How I found out originally was from, there was a garage sale from the house behind us, the Topping house, this, this one that we're talking about today. And when I went by, I found out, oh yeah, this house has been sold, and, you know, it's bought by a developer who's, or, you know, someone who's gonna develop it and build a home. And then I immediately came down here to try to find out what was going in there, 'cause it was a, a shock. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, thank you. It helps, now that I'm piecing together the letters and who they came from. There was another letter that's unidentified as well at 16667. And so I'm trying to understand a little bit more about the neighborhood. We unfortunately don't get information about how many stories on adjacent streets, or I may have missed it. So could you tell me, on Marchmont, including your house and the, the other one that, that was just referenced, are they two-story or one-story?
Our house is a two-story home. I don't know the exact address, when, when, I don't know exactly which house that is.
That's fine. And then the other question is, in terms of garage space, there's a discussion about three-wide garage versus tandem garage. Do you, what type of garage do you have?
We, we have a, oh yeah, you only saw the back of the house, we have a two-car garage. It has, you know, two sort of independent garage doors, and it looks like your standard garage.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Since it wasn't included in the neighborhood analysis, could you let us know the square footage of your house? I, I understand it's a two-story.
Yeah.
The applicant had something in there about ba- basement, and he, I didn't know if he-
No basement. We do not have a basement. I, I believe, I don't know the precise square footage, but I believe it's around 4,100 square feet. It is essentially a how, a two-story house with a regular two, two-car garage that had an in-law space built on top of it. That's the structure of that house.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Badami?
I just wanted to clarify for Commissioner Hanson that exhibit 17 provides the square footage for both 16685 Marchmont and 16667 Marchmont with the square footages.
But that was provided by the applicant, right?
That's true. Exhibit 17.
Are there any other questions? Thank you very much for coming up.
You're welcome.
I have one more card. I have a card for, again, I hope I pronounced this correctly, Nick Besrus? Doesn't look like I did.
You have to, but it's close enough.
Sorry about that.
It's me. So I'm the owner of the home at 16667 Marchmont. I've been there for six and a half years. And I wanna make a few points. I, I kinda reiterate a lot of the issues that Karen talked about when she talked about process. You have to understand, as a homeowner, you don't deal with this every day. And so it's, you know, kinda going through the learning curve while you're trying to address the issue. So from my perspective, there are three issues with the home that's proposed on Topping. One is, the size of the home is less an issue for me than the proximity of the home to the property line in the rear. And I think that has to do with the shape of the property, it's further recessed than the current home by far. So it feels like it's, you know, on top of the fence. Bit of exaggeration, but I think you get the point. The second is that what you're referring to is the three-car garage, really four-car, has a garage opening to the backyard, which is directly in line with my home. I see no reason why a garage door would be put in the back of the home other than for a motorized vehicle to be driven into the backyard, which obviously I'd be very opposed to, since that's where my property, you know, borders theirs. And the third is the window issue with the second floor, again, given the proximity, where it would, you know, essentially give them a view into our house and into our backyard. The, for me, the issue is, we, we've talked about these things individually. The builder is basically saying, you know, I'm not asking for anything more than other homes in the area. It's not a question of whether individually each of those things is true. You can find a house with a three-car garage, you can find a house that's 3,900 square feet. You can find a two-story with windows in the, it's the combination of them that make that house incompatible with the rest of the neighborhood. And in particular with, I think, Karen's property and mine, and which is what raises the concern. And so I just wanted to make those points clear. Looks like I still have a minute and 24. We could talk about any other number of things, but I guess in the interest of time, I'll cut it short and answer any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Badami?
What do you envision as a resolution?
I would very much like to see the house further back from the rear property line. I went out with a tape measure myself, and it's much, much closer than the current residences. I think that would go a long way, at least for me, to addressing the concern. I would like to see the garage door opening to the backyard eliminated. I, I really, I was dumbfounded to hear that that's actually acceptable by the building code in Los Gatos. I, I can't imagine why a residential property would need a garage door opening to the back, to the back of the yard, so.
With the win, with the house, if it was to be pushed back, say, 10 feet, you're still gonna have the windows on the second floor that might present a privacy concern. Is, is that not a concern?
Oh, it's a concern. And I, I think, you know, I would leave it to kind of, you know, smarter people than me to figure out how you address that concern. One thing I will say is, if you look at the rear of the home, there are a lot more windows. You know, it's, the first floor is like entirely window, the second floor has a lot more windows than certainly my home does. I think one way of abating the issue is to reduce the number of windows looking down.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, maybe I missed it. Is, is your a two-story or one-story home?
It's a two-story, and I believe somebody quoted the square footage of the home earlier incorrectly. You guys had it noted at 3,900 square feet, my home is 3,700 square feet.
Okay, yeah, that's what it states in the addendum, it didn't say how many stories it was. And the number of, how wide is your garage, a two or three?
It's a three-car garage.
Three-wide?
Three-wide.
Okay. And do you have an opinion about the three-wide garage on this proposed house on Topping?
No. My big issue with the garage, frankly, is the, the door opening to the rear of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you. Both you and the prior speaker had a concern regarding the large rear-facing windows, the windows that face your properties. Would windows that were higher and smaller, maybe in a band, be more amenable?
To me, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane?
Mr. Nick?
Nick.
Nick. I'll call you Nick if I can. That's be us?
Not quite.
How do you pronounce it?
Esbius.
Esbius. I was close.
You're close.
Esbius. You and the prior speaker wrote good letters, as I said before. I walked your backyards today. I think a lady from your house text you that I was invading your backyard, but I was doing that with her permission. And I walked yours. And I'm not, I'm not blown over by the privacy issue per se, especially on yours. There's a lot of foliage. I couldn't see them that clearly from, from your walk-around terrace that you have. And there is a lot of foliage in between you and them, but you both have large two-story houses. There's other ways I can think about it and address it. But how do I say to them, you can't have a two-story? How do I say to them that it's okay for you to look down into their yard, but they can't look down into your yard? That's the dilemma that I'm on. Now, there's other language that...
Is that a question to him?
Yes, how can I?
Could he answer it then before you move on?
I'm sorry, the question is, how do you say you can't have a two-story? You say you can't have a two, I'm kidding. I think the thing you have to consider is, I didn't build the house. I bought the house. So I'm not suggesting that my home is ideal for the neighborhood. But one thing that, again, I'll go back to, is it's not the two-story or the windows in isolation. It's in combination with other things. The proximity of that home to the property line in the back is much, much closer than mine. And so it really feels like, again, one person's opinion and perspective, they're peering over the fence into our yard.
Did you say it's, that the new house would be closer?
The new home being...
I looked at the story poles today. I thought they were flush to the old house.
No, they're not.
Okay.
I actually, in my letter, measured, I believe, I provided some numbers, and I don't recall them off the top of my head, but I want to say it's 10 or 15 feet closer to the property line.
Now, I think you had another question. Did you?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes? I'm sorry.
Can I relinquish the floor to Karen?
Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, so I wanted to maybe follow up on Commissioner Kane's question about the setback in the rear yard and how that's different than yours. I'm looking at the site plan for Topping, and I am seeing 41-foot, 2-inch setback from the rear yard. And I see, you know, I believe that's well within the zoning requirements. And I was looking at Exhibit 17, which was provided by the applicant, stating that your setback was 40-some feet. Do you, do you know, it says stating that yours is 42 feet.
I don't...
41 is pretty close to 42. Is there...
No, no, no. So again, I went out with a, with a tape measure, I believe, in my letter. I quoted numbers. I don't recall specifically. But I can tell you that the Topping home is much closer to the property line. And if we need to go back and re-measure and look at it, we should do that.
Okay, well, I'll follow up.
It's not 42 and 41. It's like 20 and 40 something.
I'll follow up with the applicant on that. Thanks.
Can we, just to follow up on that one point, Commissioner Hughes is looking at a site plan, which gives that 41 feet, I take it. You're saying you went out with a tape measure. I would assume...
Using the story poles.
Pardon me?
Using the story poles that were there.
Okay, so you would go from your fence...
From the adjoining fence, yeah.
To the story pole?
That's right.
And you get more or less than the 41 feet?
I, again, I believe I quoted it in my letter. I don't have it in front of me, so I couldn't tell you the exact measurement. But I believe it was less.
Okay.
And certainly less than the distance of my house to that same fence.
Okay. Are there any other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, I have one more card. And this is Brian Kraus.
Yeah, thank you. I'm actually Karen's husband. I just wanted to quickly answer Michael Kane. I think you had a question about how can you tell people you can't have a two-story. A couple of points. One is if you drive around the neighborhood, there's very few kind of two-story facing two-story. And the ones that are, have very large trees that are grown up. And you came by the property, apparently. So on the left side, you'll notice that there was a bunch of oak trees that were big. We obviously didn't plant those. It takes a long time to grow. And I'm assuming, you know, no one in Los Catos would want to take down those trees. In the back of the yard, there is some shrubs and things that are allowed, I believe, as per the easement. There's one larger tree we have in our property, which is kind of in, it's farther back outside of the easement. So if you look across the street from our house, there was a new development just built. And they put most of the bedrooms in the front, so the windows are mostly in the front. If you go into the master bedroom in that house, I know, because we looked at buying that one as well, they only have two small windows that, so they can't look into the neighbors behind them. All the other houses, as far as I know, are not two-story to two-story. And the few that I've seen all have very large, mature trees that have probably been there for 20, 30 years. So the problem we have is we can't really grow large, mature trees to sort of shield it. And so it, the question of if we have a two-story, I understand the question. It seems a little silly for someone with a two-story to say, well, it's not fair to have a two, they have to have a two-story. But there is this easement issue, and effectively, our house was there first. If we had known when we went to purchase the house, that there'd be a two-story house being built behind it, we wouldn't have purchased the home. And so, in fact, when we did talk to the homeowner behind and asked what they were going to do, they said they had plans for a single-story home. The previous owner had actually built our house and had plans for building a single-story behind our house. They had a death in the family and ended up having to sell. But we didn't, we didn't know any of this till we got the house. And then we were led to believe that it would be a single-story house. So anyway, I just wanted to say that. So, thank you.
Let's see if there are any questions. Yes, Commissioner Birch?
By any chance, do you know when they wound up, it's unfortunate, someone passed away, and then they had to sell the property? Do you, did they give you any indication of when that was?
I, I don't want to misspeak, but my understanding is the death in the family occurred fairly a long time before they had sold.
Okay.
They had, they had had plans of, they built this house, they decided, they had an opportunity to buy the house behind it. They decided to sell this house, not to us, but the previous owners. And they built, and bought the house behind them, thinking they could build a one-story house. And I don't know if they were going to sell it or live in there. They never ended up remodeling it and ultimately ended up selling it. So, you know, I'm not a developer. I think there's other things you could do to, besides only making it, you know, a single-story to kind of moderate these issues. But there is a problem because of this easement. You could, for example, put more of the windows in the front and build more bedrooms upstairs that were facing the front topping. I don't think that'd be a problem for the topping folks. But, you know, I don't want to speak for them, but...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? If not, thank you very much. All right. I think that's all the cards I have. And now I can go back to Mr. Norton. And you'll have five minutes.
Sean, can we bring up the site plan, please?
And we won't start the time till you're ready.
Okay. Okay, you have it on the wall there? On the site plan, it shows that the back of the house is 41 feet away from the property line. I don't know exactly, because I've never been in the neighbor's house, how far they are away from it. But the figures that I was given, and I want to point out, point to you to Exhibit 17, which you received today. Is that correct, Sean? Okay. It has a comparison of the three houses. First of all, I like to point, one thing is, is that, that nobody in Topping is here. Nobody has written you from Topping. You have nothing but positive response from our neighbors. Start with that. Okay?
Can I ask you a question?
The, in Exhibit 17, it compares the three houses in here. And I don't really know what those distances are correct from their house to the back property line. But this is what I was told by staff what they were. So that's where we start with the design of the house. We went 41 feet off the back, and we kept that. 41 feet is a huge backyard. It's only required in your own cody ordinance for this lot to be 20 feet, or double the distance from the property line. There's a difference in elevation of approximately five feet between the, between the ground level on their upper lot and ours down below. Eight foot behind, behind it, you're three feet at the top. So it's eight, nine, 10, 11 feet from our lower, any of our lower windows to, to their house. There's 11 feet of difference that they can't see. So it would be, they could, yes, they can look up and see the neighbor's upper story. They will never see the lower story. The other way around, it works the other way around, because you're looking downhill. The, the square footage of lots are pretty comparable. They're all right around 14,000 square feet. As you can see here on the sides of the houses, they're comparable. One of them's larger, one's smaller than what we're proposing. The upper story, and what I did is I measured just by sight, the glazing on the windows. And, you know, just to picture what, what is, who is looking at what on the upper stories. And of the three houses, what we're proposing is less glazing than the other two houses that are looking down at us. We're not, we're not proposing. In architecture, south facing is real important, both for even making energy requirements, is that you need south exposure. You, you cannot do high windows on a south exposure and make, make rooms work. First of all, egress, the second thing is light and air. And, and I don't think that we're beyond what should, a good design is. This is good design, and it has, I think, a total of three upper windows, three and a half. And again, it states on here the distance from the rear property line. I think, I don't think in any way that we're going to intrude on their privacy. And I respect their concern, but we're not asking for anything that they don't already have. Distance from the, distance from the property line, glazing, they're more than we are. They have houses that are comparable in line. So I think that's my, my closing statement. We would like to keep the three garages, but if it's necessary, do what you need to do. We do not want to change the glazing. I'm glad to lower the, go to a nine-foot plate, if you'd like a nine-foot plate on that. That lowers the whole house one foot. The garage door in the back, we're open. I mean, that easily can be changed. If that's an issue with the gentleman, fine. We can, we can make that work.
All right, thank you. Well, see, there are questions. You are finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I think Vice Chair Kane had a question.
Mr. Norton, earlier you said you lowered the second floor one foot and the first floor one foot. One of those was a six-inch lower, wasn't it?
Yeah, one six, six inches and one one foot.
It went from 10 and a half to 10?
Yeah.
So that'd be 18 inches, not 24.
Yeah. And we already did that. That's already in the new plans. But we're willing, if you want to go to nine feet on both levels, which are...
I heard you say that earlier.
Okay.
You also said earlier that you were surrounded by two-story houses. And we have an exhibit, of course, I can't nail it right now. It's, it's an exhibit that concerns the houses on Topping Way. And I think there were 10 of them. And the numbers I read on stories were 1111112, 11112, the second two being yours. I don't understand how you're surrounded by two-story houses when your immediate neighborhood is all one stories with the house, with the exception of one house.
That may have been misstated, sir. I, the house in front, and the two in the rear, in front and back of the house have two-story.
And we also talked about garages. And you mentioned there were a lot of three-story garages in the neighborhood. I'm going to read you the garages going down one side topping to the other. 222220202, carport, carport, 2022221, carport, 321. There's only one on the street. So when we talk about redefining a neighborhood, or losing a consistency with what's already there, these numbers are reasonably compelling. A bunch of two-stories, a bunch of two, a bunch of one-stories, and a bunch of two garages. And, and I guess my question is, do you understand what my problem is when it comes to adhering to the residential design guidelines that, that we've spoken about tonight?
Sir, I do. And I think you should understand that we had a house built under your, under your preview, that has a three-story, excuse me, a three-car garage right adjacent to us. So it would not...
The one. That's the only one in the neighborhood.
There's one more down the street, I think. That's it. Okay, all right. I don't want to make argument with you, sir.
Some of them don't have any.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Commissioner Hughes?
Yeah, so I have a question about landscaping. I understand there's a challenge with the easement. And we, normally, when we have these kinds of issues with neighbor privacy, we really try to look for solutions. I'm trying to understand how much you've explored potential landscaping solutions to that. And in particular, there was a letter, I think from a Mr. Duxbury, requesting some landscape changes as well. I don't know if you're aware, are you aware of that letter?
Yeah, and we did make those that he suggested.
Those, those changes have been incorporated already?
Yes, they are, sure.
Okay. And did he indicate whether those are satisfactory?
I, we didn't. Once, once we wrote back to the architect, we haven't had a second review from that. I don't know that. Maybe Sean can bring it to face on this. But, but we're willing, you know, here's our problem is, is that, that actually, that easement back there is in, is in the, it's in the sanitation and water district. And so what happens is, is that even though it's a storm drain that goes through there, it's controlled by them. And the things that they condition us on is, is that we can't do any deep-rooted trees in that easement. And so it's 10-foot wide in the front, and then partway across the back, but not all the way across the back. Okay. Then, the requirement, also even like fence posts for, for gates and stuff can't be deep-beded into, into that 10-foot-wide easement. It's just underground right now, and it goes up the property and keeps going. And then also it takes a Y-turn, and nobody knows why, across the back of the property. But it's there. And it's recorded. So we can, we can put trees, if they wanted to, 10 feet in, or they can do landscaping on our side, and we'll pay for it. We will do landscaping to block it. If they want that privacy, we're glad to pay for trees on their side, where it's not on the easement.
Could you say that again? You're going to pay for trees?
We would be happy to pay for some trees on their property if they wanted to do it along their back property line, if they, that...
And would, would you be open to doing taller trees further inset outside of the easement area?
I think that can be done. We have a very good landscape architect that we can, I'm sure that he could find some way to, to give us a, but you've got to remember that we're dealing with, we have, we have an eight-foot fence in the back. And their, and their grade level, when they get back to their house, is five feet higher than us. So it's a matter, it would, it would give us more privacy from them than it would be from them, from us. So...
So my understanding from your answers is that you have, there are still options to be explored with regard to landscaping to obtain better privacy?
That's correct, sir.
And you haven't met with these neighbors to discuss it at this point?
No.
Correct? And are you willing to do so?
I am willing to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Janoff?
Thank you. You did mention that you'd be willing to consider removing the third bay of the three-bay garage to bring it to a two, well, I guess I'm assuming that. Keeping a two-car garage with possibly one tandem space would eliminate that third bay. And you said earlier that you would be amenable to considering that. Sir? Mr. Norton?
Yes, I'm trying to get a response from Arthur Lynn, who's my client.
I'm asking Mr. Norton.
We prefer to keep it, but we will, we will, we will go to the response from the planning commissioner, how they choose this for us to do this.
So I just want to be clear, because earlier there was a very clear question stated, would you be willing to consider removing what effectively is the fourth car space in the garage by eliminating that three-wide front elevation? And you, I believe indicated that you would be willing to consider that? And I just want to verify that.
If you make that a condition, yes, we will.
Okay. So if, if you eliminate that third car wide, that, that decreases the overall width of the house, would you be willing also to consider bringing the whole footprint forward on the property, which effectively increases the back easement, perhaps giving the distance to your rear neighbors that they're looking for?
I, I think it's, the house sits in line with what's out there now. I mean, bringing it forward doesn't, doesn't improve the site planning at all. We're the same distance that they are.
I'm talking about the front easement.
I know.
So currently, your front easement is about 45 feet. So you're 45 feet in the front, 41 to 45 feet in the rear. My question is if you, because you're, you're currently right... My question is if you, because you're currently right at your easements of, well, you could, you could go to eight feet on the other side, but you're at 10 and 8. With three-car bay, if you eliminate that bay, it reduces the width, you could pull the house forward on the property. My question is, would you be willing to do that in conjunction with eliminating that third bay?
And what would you be suggesting? How far are you asking us to move it forward?
I'd be willing to ask you to move it forward in, it's, currently it sits, the corner of the house sits at 10-foot, right? So if you shift it and keep that 10-foot easement on the, as you're facing the house, on the right side of the house, move it forward perhaps 10 feet. You've got a 45-foot easement in the front of the house. Would you be willing to do that? To give that extra distance that your rear neighbors are saying is a perceived encroachment on their, on their rear properties?
I don't think it's fair to do that to us. I think it's good site planning now. We're doing exactly what they have in their backyard. We're not encroaching on their privacy at all.
Let me make a suggestion.
And that, I would.
Should we decide to continue this matter, one, we should give some, first, we'll close the public input. And then if we were to decide to continue the matter, asking for some changes, I think we could tell staff what we had in mind and they could determine to the extent that the applicant is willing to do so. Then we'd have a date certain when the applicant could come back and we could evaluate what changes were proposed. So I would encourage us, I think at this point, to let this gentleman finish, and I think he said he had, and then I'll close. Are there other questions? That's fine. But as soon as you're through questioning, we'll close and move on. So Commissioner Birch?
Could you let me know, please, the dates that you had the neighborhood meetings?
Yes, we did.
What dates?
Sean, help me with this, but I, I think it was, it was probably in March, end of March, maybe the beginning of April.
So Exhibit 14 to your staff report includes some signed letters dated March 28th of this year.
Yeah, I saw those. Is that the only meeting that you had with the neighbors?
We were not aware that we're supposed to do more. Oh, we talked to, we've talked to him numbers of times, but never as a, never as an organized meeting.
So can I ask a follow-up question to that? So the drawings in front of us are dated August of 17. Are these the same drawings that you reviewed in March with the neighbors?
Not exactly, because there was requirements that were put forward by staff for us. One of them was pulling the garage back. That was one change we made. Other than that, as far as the dimensions, front profile and that, that's exactly what they saw. Yeah?
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other, Vice Chair Kane?
I just want to clarify. Earlier you said, "We want what they have." And I'm asking if you understand that what they have is on county property and what you have is on town property. So it may be that you can't have what they have. It may not seem fair. I asked about why they can have a two and you can't have a two, but what it comes down to is complying with the residential design guidelines. They're not in that game. They're playing football. We're playing baseball. These are town requirements that don't exist for the county. And when you say, "I want, I wonder," do you understand that there's a difference between the two standards?
I do understand that, sir, but I also just don't understand that every house around us is in the county, besides one. So where?
They're all one story, with the exception of one. But the two that you're concerned with were built larger than the ones that are around you, and they're on county standards.
But they will end up in the city. It's just a matter of time, right?
They're already built.
Yeah. We go back to Lafco and how they blew the annexation chart.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not.
Can I make one presentation here real quickly?
Go ahead and close. Let me just say this, we're really through, but I'll give you two minutes.
Okay, sir. I just want you to see what it'll look like.
Go ahead and use your time.
Thank you. He had a plan B.
Now, if you want to speak from there, you'll have to take the mic. Just, it'll come right out.
Well, I'd like the public to see this too, so. What, this is just a large copy of what you have there. Basically, this is taking the far-left.
You need the mic. We can't hear you without the mic.
This is taking the far-left garage off of the plans and actually increases the setback to about 12 to 14 feet from that sideline there. There you go. You can see on the floor plan. It still gives the tandem garage. The total, the total, the total.
You have to take the mic with you. This is being recorded, so you have to take it over. It comes off.
Okay. The house is approximately 12 feet from the new property line with a stick configuration. We do the two-car deep. We're fine with removing that garage door at the back if that's an issue with anyone. We don't, you know, it's becoming more popular in architecture to do that kind of structure, so. This is an alternative that we could present to you.
Okay, if we determine to continue the matter or further consideration, we will certainly take that into account. Do you have something else?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I'm going to close the public input to this public hearing. I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners if they have any discussion, questions, or a motion. Commissioner Badami?
So I'll make my comments. I have concerns with the neighborhood compatibility and the privacy issues for the neighbors on Marchmont. So first and foremost, I think a landscaping plan has to be worked on, something that's mutually agreed upon between the applicant and the neighbors on Marchmont that have not had an opportunity to meet with the applicant. I can't necessarily deny a two-story home based on council direction and the fact that there are two-story homes in the neighborhood. So how do we work with that privacy issue? And that would be working on the landscaping. The other issues I have with the neighborhood compatibility is the massing of the home. So if we decrease the width by possibly removing a garage bay or just removing some square footage to shrink that width, that could be a solution. The other issues I have, the applicant already agreed to work on, and that would be lowering the first floor height to nine feet, which would decrease some of the massing, and also removing the rear garage door. And I would like some work on the window heights in the second floor, or the second floor to the rear, but the applicant did state he wasn't willing to work with that. And that does remain a concern for me. I mean, putting it at eye level, you're still going to get plenty of light and air with a southern exposure to the rear, so I don't really see how that can be an issue for the applicant.
Let me also say, whatever the applicant's position is, will not limit our recommendations to the staff. Okay, Commissioner Hudes?
Yeah, thank you. I agree with, I think, every point that Commissioner Badami made. I had a couple of additional suggestions as well. One is that I think it'd be better for both levels to be nine feet tall. And there was some discussion and back and forth about bringing the front setback forward, and that does relieve some of the issues with the rear neighbors, but I think it then works against other residential design guidelines that we have that would like to see consistent setback in the front with, from the street. So I am not in favor of shifting it forward, particularly since the setback seems to be very similar to the rear neighbors when we actually look at numbers that have been presented to us. I think that there is more work that can be done on the window design. It's not, I don't think it's all or nothing, meaning no windows or only, only very tall, narrow windows, but perhaps some mixture could achieve a better amount of privacy in conjunction with landscaping. And so I guess what I'm getting at is that landscaping works with windows, works with height, and so I think a sort of comprehensive privacy plan would be very helpful to understand, particularly if that privacy plan was worked on by the applicant and the neighbors. And then the other question I had about outreach, neighborhood outreach, when we're talking about this, what's the normal distance that neighbors are notified?
For a project like this, we would notify to 300 feet of the property.
And that would include people who are in the county as well?
Owners and occupants regardless of jurisdiction.
So that would definitely include neighbors on Marchmont then?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I would recommend that that outreach be continued. And then just the last thing for the applicant is that I think if we do hear this again, I would just emphasize the importance of bringing only accurate information to us and not necessarily, you know, bringing wishes, but items that are actually realistic and have been arrived at with consideration. And I definitely, when I see inaccuracies, it definitely raises questions, so I would encourage the applicant to be as accurate as possible.
Commissioner Hanson?
I agree with what the, my fellow commissioners had also said, but I wanted to talk a little bit about the size of the house, although I know by reducing the floor height, that will, that could do something. And I know that reducing the width of the garage would do something. But the fact is that the, right now, the proposed square footage is 3,907 square feet. And the maximum with the floor ratio is 3,977, so they're within 70 feet of the max. And if you look at our residential design guidelines, they're very clear that the fire is not a goal, it's a maximum. And so, you know, we're, we have a house here that would also be the largest house in the neighborhood. And independent of county or other, you know, that's not the kind of trend that we want to set. And I think there's another way for the applicant to get their square footage, and that would be to do what a lot of owners have done, is put more square footage in the basement or cellar, which wouldn't be counted as the total square footage. And that would also have some benefit of making it less bulky above ground. So I'd like to see that the house is no bigger than what's already the biggest house in the immediate neighborhood, the way that's defined in our residential guidelines. And like I said, I'm not opposed to them having that square footage, but I think that it would be helpful to put some of that under, underneath.
Mr. Janoff? I'm just going down the line here.
Yeah, thank you. I do agree with my fellow commissioners as far as been stated, although I do think there is some room to pull the property or to pull the structure forward on the property if you would reduce the width of the house. In addition, you've got a very, you've got a very narrow front, relatively narrow front of the lot and a relatively wide rear of the lot. And it seems to me that you've exacerbated the mass and bulk issue by using up almost the entire width of that front elevation. If there were any possibility of shifting, reduce the square footage would be great, but if you could shift it so that perhaps the single-story element is toward the rear of the house, that would also alleviate your rear, rear neighbor concerns about privacy. So I'm just wondering if there's a way to rearrange so that you can achieve the square footage you're looking at without having to excavate, which is an additional cost, but takes advantage of the interesting and quite large property that you have.
Commissioner Birch, did you have anything to add?
I don't want to repeat anything that my fellow commissioners have said. I completely agree with them. I think the only thing that I would add in addition to the need for the landscaping to reviewed and with the privacy items is that, you know, the fire, the fire-required window on the back elevation for the bedroom could be moved around the corner, therefore allowing for there to be clear-story windows along the back that would still capture light but allow for more privacy. And I would also ask that, if we are to see this again, that we require the applicant to have additional outreach with the neighbors. March was a long time ago, and these drawings have been updated, as far as I can tell, three times since then. So that's a lot of information that's been lost to the neighbors that I think may have made this process simpler, actually, for the applicant through those conversations.
Vice Chair Kane?
I'm inclined to make a motion to deny. In our Hillside guidelines, we have a picture of do this and a picture of don't do that. And this is a picture of don't do that. If you look on page three of Exhibit 7, Larry Cannon's, the town architect's, comments on page three, item two just sums it up for me. It shows two houses on either side, and this one, you know, much wider than anybody else, much taller than anybody else. And I don't think we're getting neighborhood compatibility across. If I felt there was a way to get neighborhood compatibility across, I'd, I'd look for a motion with some conditions. But if we're just beating a dead horse, then I'll deny it and see where it goes from here. Maybe we could bring the applicant back up and find out if they're willing to work with staff and achieve neighborhood compatibility, achieve agreement with the residential design guidelines. I don't want to give 10 feet, 5 feet, 2 feet. There's a list of things we've said that can be worked on by the applicant. What I really want is compliance with the residential design guidelines and a lot of attention paid to Larry Cannon's letter.
Let me just say this, any commissioner can make any motion they want. And if they can get a second, we'll discuss it and we'll vote on it. If you want to make a motion to deny, go right ahead.
What I said was, if he's interested in working this again.
Well, he's already indicated a number of times that he is. But he perhaps is not willing to work it the way you want it working. But he has said repeatedly, when asked questions, yes, we could change that, yes, we could change that. So that's on the record, but it may not be enough. I'm not, I'm not taking sides on it. I'm just saying, if you want to make a motion to deny, go ahead. Otherwise, I would suggest you wait because I think there's going to be a motion to continue. But if you want to preempt that, you certainly could try.
A motion to continue would be fine if I knew they were willing to work on specifically page three and the guidelines. And therefore, I'll let somebody else make that motion.
Commissioner Badami?
I move to continue. I move to continue to a date certain. Architecture and site application S-17-011. With consideration of the direction provided by the commission, the comments are contained in the public record.
Is there a second? Is Commissioner Hudes?
I'll second that.
Is there a discussion? If not, I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Let's get a date certain.
Okay, we want a date certain. Excuse me for a moment.
So given the outreach and the request, staff would recommend February 14th.
Okay, so the date certain on this motion, if acceptable, would be February 14th. All right, any, I take that, that both of you accept that?
Yes.
If there are no other comments, I'll just call the question. And so all those in favor, say aye. Aye. I believe it passes unanimously. So it will be, hopefully, we'll have a good working relationship, and when it comes back to us, it will be something, yes, it will be something that we can pass, but we'll see. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break, and then we'll get to the next matter.
To answer any questions.
Commissioner Hudes.
Yeah, thank you. I did have the opportunity to watch the recording of the council's meeting, and it seemed as though where council ended up was a essentially, I would say, a de novo consideration, meaning that they did not give specific direction except to listen to their concerns. Because I believe there was at least one motion before that had specific direction that failed, and so they came back with, I think there were two motions before, but one of them had specific remand instructions to the planning commission. And so my understanding is that we consider this as sort of a complete application in itself, paying attention to the items pointed out by council, but that we really need to look at the whole picture of the application. Is that, is that correct?
Precisely.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Vice Chair Kane?
That was, that was my question.
Before we start, I will say this. I don't seem to have any cards. Oh, I'll come back here. I don't have cards from the applicant. So I would appreciate it if I could get those cards. If you don't have them right away and you want to wait, that's okay, but it would make my life easier if I had them. So now Commissioner Hanson?
So I had one question about the EIR, and then a couple, a question about some of the additional things that are proposed by the applicant, which I can ask them as well, but I wanted to ask staff's perspective. So we, when we reviewed this before, did not, did not address the issue of the EIR because we were deliberating about the application since we had recommended denial. We didn't go forward with that, but it is on the table for us to consider the EIR in conjunction with this application. So as it stands right now, the, the EIR, the way that they're structured, they have the, the ideal proposal, and then there's always a proposal of not doing the project, and then there's sort of one in the middle. And so right now, the size of the project is the, the alternative size that they looked at, and they did find that it was economically feasible. So my question about the EIR is, since the EIR, all the mitigation measures determined at a larger size, that there was no, there was any, no significant impacts that couldn't be mitigated, and those mitigations are in our terms and conditions, there's no need to revisit the, we don't, do we need to revisit the EIR in any way because the mitigations should apply to a lower size? And I, I can't think of any other issue, but so I'm asking the question, do we need to?
So the EIR does still apply to the project, and it will need to be part of your consideration before any, at least it could, needs to be considered before an approval is considered or as part of a motion to approve. As we discussed the last time we had this before you, if it was a motion to denial, you don't need to consider the EIR. However, I believe your question is, is there some change that, or revision that needs to be made to the EIR? And the answer is no.
So just related to that, if, if for some reason the size wasn't one of the ones, alternatives mentioned, would there be a need to revisit the EIR?
We have had letters from the consultants who prepared some of those documents that were the basis for the EIR, who said that did state that it is still, the project is now less impactful than what was there before.
Okay. And then one quick question. It was on the, the additional open space as well as the offering to let the surface parking be available to the neighborhood. During the council hearing, there was some discussion about making that more than just a term and condition, but making it sort of ironclad. For example, if the, if the, you know, first tenant thought that it was, you know, knew that they had to make this space available, what might happen going forward? And so I didn't see in the terms and conditions an easement. Is that an appropriate, would that be an appropriate way to make it more ironclad?
The conditional use permit will run with the land, so it will apply to office uses going forward. However, additional conditions could be considered.
So essentially, what you're saying is that is a part of the terms and conditions of the CUP per se? Because we have this big list of terms and conditions, and I didn't know what's in the CUP versus what's in the ANS.
Yeah, so all of the conditions are part of the conditional use permit.
Okay.
Vice Chair Kane?
With respect to the EIR, we have a six-page letter from Attorney Rachel Mansfield Howlett regarding the inadequacies and faults of the EIR. Is that something that has to be responded to, taken into consideration? I don't pretend to understand all of it. I wondered if it was something that would compel us to respond.
So we typically do not respond to that if you have specific questions about what they've raised in that. And which letter, again, are you talking about, the May letter?
May 4, 2017.
Yeah, I mean, in, in general, no. I disagree with their conclusions in that our EIR is defective or needs to be amended. So if that's, that's the answer.
That's exactly what I needed to know. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask the applicant to step forward. The applicant will have 10 minutes. I have a card here, thank you very much, and I want to make sure I can read your writing. It's Daniel Kirby?
That's correct.
Okay. And you have with you, I believe, your architects and the owners, LP acquisitions. So go right ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Dan Kirby. I'm an architect and partner with ArchTech Architects in San Jose, principal in charge of the project. So I want to thank Ms. Armour for the summary of what we heard on October 3 at the town council meeting. And these are, again, the points that were raised at the meeting, which she articulated, I thought, very well in her presentation. And rather than read them all again, I'm just going to launch right into how we have addressed and agreed to those points, all of those points with our third redesign, which you have before you. The first thing we've done is we've reduced the square footage of the building from the eighty, former 83,000 square feet down to 74,260 feet. This is the square footage that is consistent with the environmental impact report's recommendation, which is referred to as the reduced scale alternative. It's something that also that the town council had recommended. And so if you look at this diagram here, I'll take the mic out here. You could see that formerly represented by this blue line is the former design, and the new design has now been set back significantly from the north property line. The entry's also been shifted over to the left to make the building a little bit more symmetrical since it got pulled in from the right. The purpose of pulling the, the property, or excuse me, the building in from the north property line is twofold. Number one, it creates the open space that was also recommended by the, the town council, and we are, we are proposing a large dog agility park, approximately 54, 400 square feet, and an amenity area for tenants and visitors. The, the second advantage to pulling back from the north property line is to create a larger buffer between the residential property to the north, which was something that the neighbors had requested. And thirdly, I'll get to these photos, it does create a view corridor from the properties across the street and the sidewalk of the hills beyond, which was another important consideration of the neighbors. The overall parking has also been reduced based on the reduction in square footage. We've gone from 332 spaces down to 298 spaces, which is, which is a reduction of 30 garage parking stalls and four surface parking stalls. The third redesign preserves 38 of the 42 at-grade parking spaces in front of the building. The four-space reduction and reconfiguration of the parking lot has allowed us to create a second amenity area, which is here on the north end of the, or excuse me, on the south end of the property, which can be used as well by, by the public. I wanted to point out that we've, we've achieved further reductions in the overall volume of both the building and the parking garage. So whereas before, we had achieved a 25% reduction with our second redesign in the building volume, that number has now increased to 33% volume reduction with this redesign. And the garage had formally achieved a 22% volume reduction from the original design, and now that's been increased to 27%. And I have specific square foot numbers, or excuse me, cubic foot numbers if anybody's interested in, in hearing those numbers. The repositioning of the building entry to the center has done, we think, a few really nice things to the design. I'm going to go back to the very first slide. So with the building pulling in on the north side, the former location of the entry was kind of skewed to the right once that was done. So what we decided to do is pull the, pull the entry over a little bit. What that allowed us to do was to create a little bit more balanced facade. And you'll notice that the, the different architectural elements have now been kind of evened out. One of the prior concerns was that the, there were, there appeared to be some fairly long facades that had a lot of the same elements occurring across them. What we've done now is created some distinct architectural elements that are a little bit more balanced. So I think that's, that's a successful, a successful result in terms of the look and feel of the building. We were also requested to increase the size of the street trees, and that's been done as well. It's part of our landscape, revised landscape design. We've gone from 36-inch box trees to 48-inch box trees. And we can answer any specific questions in that regard as well. We've retained the, the amenity area right in front of the building, the drop-off, the driveway locations have not changed, the street configuration that we had before with the straightening and widening and adding the bike lane. All of that has been preserved from the prior design. Here you can see the original massing of the building, represented by this dash line. The second redesign, represented by the thicker dash line, now the third redesign pulling the, pulling the building back from the north property line. And again, the, the, these are very realistic photo, photoshopped plans showing the existing condition from across the street and the view towards the building and the hills beyond. This diagram shows you how the tree growth would occur over a period of several years from the start to the finish. Traffic counts have also been reduced accordingly based on the reduction in square footage. Our traffic consultant is here this evening if you want to talk about some of those specific numbers, but there's been a corresponding reduction in trips based on the reduction of the square footage. And then we've got some key, key features for the Los Gatos community, some of which people are already aware of. But, you know, economic vitality for the town, alternative modes of transportation. We've also got a construction management plan, which we can, we can answer questions on as well. One of the things I wanted to really stress is that the, the current square footage of this third redesign is really essential to achieving an economically viable and marketable project, excuse me, for a Class A development. The project, project floor plates are about 36, 37,000 square feet, which is very common in a Class A office market. And so we think the square footage at this point is, is appropriate and reasonable, also meets the requirements of the EIR and town council. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioner Hudes?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to the discussion about the straightening of the street, and I wonder if you could first just review for me what the change is that's been made to the street. I, I know, I'm going back to the original proposal on that.
Certainly. So a portion of the property that's owned by the developer is going to be deeded to the city in order to create a straighter and wider portion of the street from the start of our property all the way to the intersection of Highway 9. And what is going, what that's going to allow us to do is create dedicated left and right turn lanes at the intersection as well as a bike lane in front of the property.
And how much is that? Is, how wide is that? How long is that?
I, I'm not sure off the top of my head that the actual width that we're increasing at. I could, I could get you that information.
Yeah, it's important to understand that. The issues about safety with residents on that street have continued to be a concern, and the traffic situation on, on Highway 9 has gotten worse since the application in terms of cut-through traffic and gridlock, and there's not a permanent solution to that. So I think it's going to be very important for us to understand how this will work with safety and the ability of emergency vehicles to get into that area. So any information you have on that would be helpful, and I think we're, we probably will have some follow-up questions on that once I get that information.
Sure. And I can tell you that the, the, the northbound direction of Alberta Way has not been decreased in size. It's exactly the same as it is now. It's the southbound direction where we've added the two dedicated turn lanes and the bike lane, and we do have a civil engineer, Karen Wright, that has designed that per city standard. So those lanes and the bike lane are, you know, per city standards, or town standards, excuse me.
Pardon me. Commissioner Hanson?
So I, I actually, when you were talking to Commissioner Hudes, you mentioned about the, and I hadn't intended to ask this question, but you mentioned about the dedicated, I knew about the dedicated right turn lane, but I was under the impression from the council hearing that there wouldn't be a shared left and through lane.
Correct. I misspoke. It's a shared left and through lane, and it's a dedicated
In order to make it a dedicated left turn lane, was my understanding from our staff that, that with more parking spaces on the street, would it have to be given up?
I misspoke. It, it goes left, or you could, you could continue straight across into the Los Gatos Lodge parking lot.
So, good, thank you. So my, my, my actual question is, I, I, I know it was brought up with the council, and I saw it in one of your slides, but I, I didn't see it per se in our terms and conditions, and maybe I didn't look close enough, but the, about the shuttle. So is, is there, is that still on the table to do the shuttle? And how, how do you see that working to help with the traffic mitigation?
It is on the table, and I'm going to invite Shane Arders to, to come forward if you, if you can, and talk, talk about the shuttle.
Commissioners, yes, we are planning on having a community area transit shuttle.
For one second.
Excuse me.
For the record, if you identify yourself, it would be helpful.
Sure. I'm Shane Arders. I'm the applicant. Okay. All right. So you just heard what I spoke about regarding the shuttle, yes. So if the project is approved, the shuttle will go.
And, and how, how is that going to work? I mean, the, the, basically, it'll be for the convenience of the people that work there, but there won't be any mandate to use it, right? It would just, but it, but it might help in terms of people leaving the building during the day? Or is, because it was intended to take people to downtown and back, if I understood correctly? Is that right?
Okay, so the purpose of the shuttle is to really reduce the amount of vehicle trips, right? So if we're providing the shuttle, we're reducing the amount of vehicle trips to downtown and back and so forth. So not only is that reducing that, which is part of the general plan, but it's also helping those tenants and neighbors get around from the town from point A to point B. So it's, it's multifaceted in that aspect.
So the shuttle's available to the people in the neighborhood as well as?
Absolutely, and it's available for the whole community, the high school students, anybody else who wants to use it, which is fantastic.
Okay. I had some questions about the number of employees in the building. Is that something I'm supposed to ask of you, or should I be talking to the architect?
Before you go, let me make sure. I think Vice Chair Kane had a follow-up question. As long as you were there, I wanted to make, Vice Chair Kane had a question to you, I believe.
I think Commissioner Hanson was getting at it, but I didn't get it. What is the shuttle going to do? Is it going to run 24 hours a day, 12 hours a day? Is it going to start from the building and go up to Main? And what's it going to do?
Good question. That's an operational question. So I can answer that. So we envision, and part of this is what Jennifer Armour has outlined for us, we are proposing five days a week for hours of around 10:30 to about, to about 3:30. That gives it a good five hours for availability for residents on Alberta Way to use in the morning if they want to go shopping in the downtown area. Like, for example, Commissioner Birch said back in last year or two years ago that she'd like to see a shuttle that takes people to Walgreens. Well, Walgreens, Safeway, they're all very supportive of it, and it helps bring the people around. So that's, that's Monday through Friday. Also, we've also proposed to have the shuttle run, you know, we can talk to the Chamber of Commerce, but I think there was about 10 events per year that, where we wanted to voluntarily provide the shuttle for events like the
Jazz and the Fest.
Festivals, things like that, that we've already ran it for. And there's other things, like maybe for the Christmas parade, alleviate the parking congestion and traffic in the downtown, and get that out of there so people can park elsewhere and go down to the downtown area and enjoy it, and get around from point A to point B, too.
So it sounds like you're working on the route.
No, we've already had the route. It's part, it should be part of your materials. We've already ran the shuttle a number of times voluntarily.
Will there be one running continuously or more than one?
Just one running continuously. Yep, and be a number of stops, too.
Thank you.
Before we, before he sits down, does anybody have a follow-up question with this speaker? Fine. Commissioner Janoff?
Yeah, I did have a question about the shuttle, and I didn't see that information in my packet. So there's a lot of blanks. How, how large is the shuttle? How many persons does it carry?
So the, the shuttle is approximately, I think it was about 38 seats on there.
Okay, and point A and B is from Alberta Way to what?
So it will, okay, so the number of stops that we envision, it starts at Alberta Way. It takes a left and it goes up Los Gatos Saratoga Road to Los Gatos Boulevard, takes a right, goes down to the Civic Center in that area. It makes a stop there in front, basically, by, by the high school. Then it makes another stop just past the Civic Center in the little retail area before Highway 17. It crosses over Highway 17, and then it goes to Los Gatos Park, right there. It makes a stop there. Then it will propose to go all the way down Santa Cruz, and it will do a roundabout and make a stop in parking area number three, which is, I think, behind the Wells Fargo Bank. Then it will circle back to Santa Cruz, and it will go down all the way to Walgreens, make a stop right there in front of the Starbucks across from there. And then it'll make another stop at Safeway, and then it will take a right and go to University, and then continue on around, make the loop that way.
Okay, thank you. So it's not just point A to point B, it's got a lot of points in between?
Yeah, that's a good way to describe it.
Okay, and a clarifying question. You indicated that it would stop in front of the high school, so it could be transportation for students. However, if it starts at 10:30, you're going to have a lot of kids with tardy slips. So any, any consideration to lengthening those hours so it would in fact accommodate the kids who need to get to school on time?
Well, we, you know, we, we've talked about this, and, and I, I think, and I've talked to parents, and I've talked to high school, and I've talked to Principal Grassi and a lot of people. And first of all, they're very excited about this because we, we tried to figure out what's the best way to alleviate this, to help the students and so forth. And so it came to our attention that the afternoons were the best. And so that's when you get a lot of the majority of the congestion over there. And we had lots and lots of students riding, and they all loved it. So our, our target is, we, we're open to trying to, you know, expand those hours, but targeting different groups and, and high school students is going to be a challenge. And so we want to make it available for everyone. So the afternoon seems like it's more applicable for the high schools, high school students, because they can get home faster. Mommy and daddy doesn't have to pick them up in front of the high school and fight the traffic there. It really helps in that sense.
So it sounds like you're, you're doing due diligence and talking to the users of your shuttle to make sure you're homing in on the most advantageous hours and routes?
We're talking with everyone we can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Other questions of this speaker? Yes, Vice Chair Kane?
Ms. Armour, or staff, the shuttle is, is one piece of a multifaceted question, but I'm interested in it. It's probably not going to be cheap. What do we have to cause this shuttle to keep on running? Do we have an easement? Do we have a condition of the CUP? What, what guarantees that this service will be available in the future?
There currently is no condition included about the shuttle. That is something that could be added.
And so in that condition, as with the former response, would run with the conditional use permit. And so if they ever wanted to cease operation of that shuttle, then they would have to come back and ask for a modification of the CUP.
Thank you.
Other questions for this speaker? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, so we're going back to more general questions. Commissioner Birch?
It's noted in here a few times that you're going to get the equivalent of LEED Gold. Are you not going for certification?
No, I think we're planning on going for certification, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, we'll, we'll certify it through USGPC, no problem.
Commissioner Hanson?
So the question I had wanted to ask before, I know we talked about this in, in previous hearings, but the, the, a number of employees that we can expect. And, and I wanted to add on to that, that we had some concerns from the neighbors about some changes in recent office seatings in Silicon Valley, packing more people in. So just, could you comment on, of course, it's going to be less employees than it would be if there was 83,000 square foot, but what, what would, how, like, how many people per square foot or?
I'm happy, I'm happy to talk to that. There's been a lot of numbers being bandied around about, you know, these buildings being packed full of people. And it is a fact that workstations are becoming smaller, the cubicles are becoming smaller. And primarily the reason for that is that people who work in high-tech buildings are much more mobile now. They, they work on laptops. They like to move around. Sometimes they go outside. Sometimes they go to an amenity area. So the cube, the, the large office and cubicle size just isn't really necessary anymore from a cultural, work culture standpoint. So the cube size is coming down. However, in exchange for that, we're providing many more amenity areas in buildings, open common spaces, collaboration spaces, conference spaces, where people can interact and exchange ideas. And so the overall square footage per person in a building hasn't really changed. It's just how the space is being used. And that number, truthfully and conservatively, is, is around no less than 200 square feet per person. Now, somebody will say, well, wait a second, you're giving somebody a six by six cube. That's only, you know, 36 square feet. But what you're failing to account for is all of the circulation space that's required around those cubicles, general circulation space, and all the amenity spaces, lobby, restroom cores, lunchroom, break rooms, coffee areas, all the conferencing spaces, things like electrical rooms, storage rooms, all of those other functions really drive that number down to something closer to 200 to 250 square feet per person. And I can further state that the parking requirement of four per thousand, if you take four parking spaces and you take 1,000 divided by four, that's 250. That's kind of where that number comes from, because the 250 square foot per person number is about the max that, that we see in, in the buildings that we're designing these days. We do a lot of tenant improvement work, so I can, I can really stand by these numbers. Some cities are actually driving the parking count even lower, below four per thousand. Some are getting down to 3.5 and 3. And the reason for that is they're trying to encourage alternate transportation to work, biking, public transportation, those kinds of things.
So ba, so basically, what you're saying mathematically, that since the, a number of employees per square foot isn't changing, we can expect a percentage reduction that's akin to whatever 74,000 is over 83,000 reduction?
Exactly.
You know, in terms of numbers of employees. But, but you're also reducing the parking, so that, that was, you kind of started going after my related question, which is, you know, if the standard of use is changing, then the way that we map out parking might be an issue. But it sounds like that, that, that still, what those square footages are per person is changing. It's more amenity areas. So it shouldn't, we, we shouldn't expect, in your opinion, further parking to change?
No. And actually, the four per thousand requirement, the reason we're doing that is because that's what the, the town requires. We actually think that's probably more parking than we're going to have people, but we're meeting the town's requirement. So.
That's, that's, just one last question. I, you, there's been a lot of conversation about Class A, and I, I just, not knowing all exactly how this is defined, what, what is, is there like a minimum standard for Class A? Is it how much square footage it is? Or, or what, what makes an office building Class A?
The floor plate size of, of 35,000 is really kind of a, a, a good target, even on some of the mid-rise buildings we're doing where they're, you know, they're five and six stories, the 35,000 square foot floor plate is kind of considered to be the minimum floor plate that really works in that marketplace. Once you get smaller than that, you're, you know, you're forcing people to use stairways and elevators to, to interact with their fellow employees, et cetera. So that's really a good target number. Once it goes below that, it starts to be, become a little bit more difficult from a marketing standpoint.
So that, that, that's kind of the dividing line, 35,000 square feet would be the minimum size that you could possibly be for a Class A building? Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hudes?
Coming back to parking, the building size has reduced a couple of times, and parking is down 27%. Have you looked at other? Have you looked at other considerations in terms of maybe, you know, doing more, instead of reducing both proportionally, have you looked at maybe doing more surface parking and less underground? And is it even possible to, to work toward only one level of underground parking and eliminating all of that, the, the off-hall and all the other things associated with that and the water table issues and things like that?
We, we did study that, but at the current square footage, we can't do it with, with one level of parking. We really need the two levels of parking. And I will say that this, this most recent redesign has pulled the excavation of the parking garage back from the north property line, similar to the way we pulled the building back. So that, that excavation is now same, same distance from the north property line as the building. So we have reduced the size of the garage. We can't get down to one level without substant, but there's just not enough room for surface part, for the volume of surface parking that would replace that lower level of the garage and also provide the amenity areas that we're, that we're currently proposing.
I understand it would be a trade-off with open space if you were to increase surface parking. I just wondered if you'd been through those exercises because if, if this, if this ends up hinging on some of the engineering issues with two-level parking, I just wondered if you'd already done that exercise?
We have done that exercise.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Kane.
I want to echo the, I want to echo the concern with that one-level garage. If, if this project goes forward and there's any way in hell to do it, I think that'd be a very smart thing to do, is reduce the two to just one subterranean garage. In, in the staff report and in your notes, in, in expressing concern, sensitivity on traffic and people, you made the comment that the operation on the building would be seven to six, Monday to Friday. And I was thinking, is, is that a fair promise to make? How, how could you control that in the future?
Well, again, it's, it's, it's going to be tenant-driven, but most of the companies that would lease a building like this are gonna have normal business hours. They're gonna be probably more like eight to five would be what we'd expect. And some people come in a little early, some people work a little bit passout, but, you know, I just can't, it's, it's not gonna be an operation that's gonna be having people working in it in the evening. I just can't see that.
So are you making a promise or a hope that they don't work past six?
I, I think it's a reasonable expectation that they won't work past six.
And it's a reasonable expectation that they won't work on weekends either?
I think that's a reasonable expectation, too.
Remember you talking about those millennials running around with laptops a moment ago? They work twenty-four, seven.
Yeah, but they, typically they take their laptop somewhere else on the weekend or, you know, in the evening. They're not gonna stick around their office space.
Okay, I appreciate the creation of two open spaces. And in addressing those, you talked about employees and visitors. Does that include neighbors?
Yes.
So not just visitors?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Uh, I think Commissioner Birch was next.
I actually had a question for you. Knowing that we have a lot of speakers, I know I personally have quite a few questions for the applicant. Would you prefer that this be a more general-type questioning so that we can get to that and I just list and ask at the end? Okay.
Following up on that point, you're not gonna give up any of these questions because they're gonna close, but I would certainly like to hear from everybody here that would help our, our schedule. So if somebody feels the, the need to ask a question right now, please do. But otherwise, let's follow Commissioner Birch's suggestion. Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
So what I'm going to do is I'm gonna take the cards I've got here and I'm gonna run through them and you can bring up other cards. I will say this, many of you will necessarily have to talk about the same issues that other people are talking about, and that's fine. But I would ask that, to the extent you think, my gosh, this is a repetition, you might say, I agree with Charlie or Road or somebody, and not do the same exact time. Because that will not only save us time, it'll save you time. And as you note, it's gonna get later. So it's up to you, though. I can't tell you what to do. So I'm just gonna go through these cards as they kind of came in. And the first one I have is Sergi Melnick.
Good morning, good evening, sorry. My name is Sergi Melnick and I live at forty-one Alberto Way. And I would like to ask Planning Commission to request to drill a new boring between January first and March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen.
Excuse me, I'm having trouble understanding you. If you would speak a little slower and a little louder?
Okay. Sorry, so what I'm asking Commission is to request a new, to drill a new boring between March, basically the winter, fall, spring timeframe in two thousand eighteen on the north end of the property to discover the actual depths of the water. Because that's related to the garage and the, basically how deep can you go with that, right? So the reason is because applicant did boring before that, but it was basically the peak of the drought. And they estimated the level to be around twelve feet. So, but again, in the recent years, I can show, so first, there are two, two things. I believe you have that picture already on file. But this is basically saying that based on the Santa Clara Valley Water District is that part, the half, at least half of the, yeah, half of the property is, according to them, is zero to ten feet water level. And then, and especially the north part, where applicant did not report the level of the water. And then another thing is that based on the, on the graph provided, so in the recent two, in the past two years, the water level went up significantly. So if that would be measured now, that would reveal the much higher levels of the water, I believe. And the other thing is, we, basically we asked them to first do the drilling and then second, most likely, as I said, underground went up. So even within one level of underground water, most likely they will hit the water. So it makes sense then to restrict parking to, at the surface only one level underground to prevent, it also helps to prevent differential settling beneath the two hundred fifty-foot radius from foundation that hydrologist Dr. Geiser specified. In this zone, which is the watering during construction, likely to cause ground subsidence followed by foundation, foundation settling and cracking at Los Casitas and Pueblo de Los Gatos. So there might be pipe breaks and there might be also other basically misalignments happening in there. And just to mention that, one question, the town council meeting around the ground movement, applicants replied only on ground movement during construction and did not answer the full, fully.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? There are none, so again, thank you. Next card I have is Thomas Dunn.
Hello, my name's Thomas Dunn and I've lived in Los Gatos for forty years. And during these past four decades, the town population has increased six thousand people. And we've been able to keep this small-town feeling, a quiet neighborhood, friendly people, the picturesque views, the mountains, redwoods, the sunsets. And we've done that all because this is the Los Gatos identity that we want to keep. You ask yourself, how is this able to happen? Our past leaders in the past community, in the past years, what they were doing was reinforcing the town character. And when they were faced with pressures of aggressive residential or commercial development, they made sure that it didn't have a negative impact on the neighborhood or on the town. Now, today, it's our turn and it's our responsibility to preserve the small-town character and integrity of our neighborhood. Now, it doesn't mean that we shut down the doors to development. What it means is that we remain vigilant about monitoring, monitoring, monitoring the developed, proposed developments that threaten the safety and the quality of life as we know it. There's more significant issues involved than modernization and the economic enhancement. I believe that the Los Gatos identity is a greater value to our community, for us today and for our future. We're not opposed to development of this project, but it is too large. It doesn't fit into the neighborhood, it's not compatible with the neighborhood, we're gonna lose the view of the mountains, not all of it, but we're losing a percentage view of the mountains. It's bringing three hundred cars into the neighborhood that are down Highway nine now and they'll be turning down Alberto Way. We've got traffic hazards of trying to back out of your driveway or pull out of our town, out of, out of our complex to get onto Alberto Way. We've got safety issues and hazards for the pedestrians. They're gonna be walking up and down the street with more driveways and more cars going up and down and making it a little bit more riskier. Street parking spaces, they've been taken away, which we use in front. There's two or three people that live in certain units that we have, so there's more than one car. So we use that parking place in front. The last thing is the construction time. They've given us different numbers, but you're looking at one and a half to two years. And you're gonna have dump trucks, heavy-duty equipment, digging, tearing up streets and so on. What I'd like to do in this last ten or twenty seconds is just read a quote, something out of the Los Gatos Magazine, the holiday issue, if you've got a chance to see it and read that. There's an article in there called Small Town Cheer. And it's written by Joe Przynski, who we all know has served three years as mayor over ten years of this town. And he says, "As we celebrate another holiday season, we should spend some quality time in our downtown. We, who are fortunate to have found ourselves members of this special place, should remember that it's our responsibility to preserve and to protect what we inherited when we made Los Gatos our home. It should never be taken for granted. And we might consider it our duty to help our community, our neighbors, our retail, restaurant, service businesses continue to be successful. It certainly couldn't hurt." Happy holidays.
Thank you. Are there, yes, Vice Chair Kane.
Mr. Dunn, thank you for a comprehensive presentation. You hit a lot of my points and concerns. And as I've gone over the project, something is going to go there.
Yeah.
And when you say you're not opposed to development, you're saying something's gonna go there. I've been on the street a number of times and people speed, it's congested, it seems to be impossible to make a left-hand turn up at, at Highway nine. The queue runs from LGB past the intersection on Alberta. And I was thinking, something's gonna go there. And that traffic is the way it is now, so it's just gonna get larger. Have, do you know in, in your community that the town has a traffic calming program?
No, I do not know.
Be advised that when something does go there, or now, you could apply to the town for consideration of a traffic calming program. We've done that in my neighborhood, for example. Speed bumps, signs, lights. Also, you could apply to the town for...
Remember now we're gonna ask questions?
Yeah, I'm gonna say it all of this just once.
That's not the question, though. You can ask a question, but you can't give a speech.
Consider applying for permit parking.
Got it.
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Because your speeches are very good, but they take a little time.
Sorry.
There, there's another question. Commissioner Hughes.
I believe, I'm going back to some of the earlier hearings on this, that the, the applicant acknowledged that the street parking was going to be reduced and offered surface parking inside the development to residents. Are you aware of that and is that a satisfactory solution to the law?
Yes, we are aware of that, but it depends on who the tenant is that moves in unless it's one of the terms and conditions that they have to allow us to be able to park on their spot.
If you, if it were a condition that residents were allowed to park there, would that take away some of the concerns about losing the street?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn. Next card I have is Angela Dorner, Angelina Dorner. Well, okay, you've got four down there. I, there is no four, I guess. Thank you. The next one is John Middlestat.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am John Middlestat, resident of Los Gatos Commons. And what I have to say tonight are solely my thoughts. I'm not representing anyone else at Los Gatos Commons. I would like to propose tonight a compromise for the developer. And that is to build above-ground what you can in the style proposed, but only what can be supported by a single-level underground parking garage. A two-level underground garage subjects the neighbors to great risk of damage to their properties. Let me quote from the report by hydrologist Dr. Peter Geisler. Geisler Engineering holds the opinion that construction of a two-story underground parking structure shall cause soil subsidence, differential foundation settlement, and cracked slabs at nearby houses in Los Gatos Commons, Bella Vista Village, Pueblo de Los Gatos, and Los Casitas Developments. Cracked slabs also means broken plumbing and sewer lines. It's difficult to quantify with any certainty the cost to neighbors, but recent tree root problems at a few of our units have cost in excess of thirty thousand dollars per occurrence for sewer replacement, sewer line replacements. We have sixty ground-level units at the Commons and sixty times thirty thousands, a million eight. And that's just for broken sewage lines with broken plumbing and cracked foundations on top of that. And Los Gatos Commons represents only less than half of the ground units in the neighborhood. So it's easy to see that if it happens sooner than later, when the inflation would drive it even higher, a total cost of six million is well within the realm of possibility. In discussions with Dr. Geisler, his comment to me was that a single-level garage would not present any danger for that, nor would it present the other dangers that he outlined in his report. A single-level underground garage would be acceptable to me with two provisos. One, footprint of the garage to be such that all vehicles and construction equipment can be staged on-site as now planned by the developer. And two, the portion of the building now planned, which is north of the entrance of the building, would be constrained to one story to preserve the mountain views now enjoyed by neighbors across the street and by the, those enjoying just an evening stroll. So do a single-level underground garage and build a Class A office above that. These are no, there are no two-level underground garages in Los Gatos today. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Hanson?
So, thank you for your testimony. I, I know we had Dr. Geisler come to one of the hearings about this project. The information that you were reading off to us, is this in written materials that we, was provided to the Planning Commission previously or is this?
It's on page three of his report that you have a copy of.
Okay, the, the report that we got previously or the?
Yes, you got it prior to the May meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hughes?
Just for clarification, I missed your second point on the, on the, on the one-story garage. You said, you said...
First or second slide up, and I'll point to it. This is the north part of the building to the north of the entrance. If this were one story, this view that's now about seventy percent gone would be reinstated.
I see, thank you.
Commissioner Janoff?
Just quickly, if I understand you correctly, you're, you're willing to trade open space access for a larger footprint of building, if portion of it is single-story, and/or a single-story subterranean parking? So that, that the single, that the two-story subterranean parking issue is of such a strong concern that you'd be willing to give up other amenities that, that the developer is proposing that are available to the, to the public?
I'm not speaking for a lot of the other residents, but yes, I believe the single-story garage would prevent excess... garage would prevent excess expenses to the neighbors in the future from the subsidence problem.
Thank you.
And it would also solve the number of cars that are coming.
No other questions? Thank you very much. I have three cards coming up, and they ask to be called in sequence, so that's what I'm going to do. First one is Marilyn Basham.
No, I'm actually the last. I'm sorry.
Boy, you guys are really particular. I've got three cards, and you can come up whenever you want. I've got Loretta Fowler and Marietta, Marietto Reine, so take your pick. But just let us know who you are.
Good evening. My name is Loretta Fowler. I'm speaking for the Los Gatos Commons, and I will comment on the third redesign of 405 Alberta Way. First, I have to point out that the town council made no motion to direct the developer to reduce the building to 74,260 square feet. Second, we object to settling on the reduced-size alternative of 74,260 square feet in the draft EIR. I spoke to the author, Richard James, who said that the number was, quote, "just a number," end quote, "not derived from any objective or quantitative analysis," and we would like a better treatment than just a number. Third, the redesign does not address our most important concerns. The building-
Let me stop you for one second. If you pull the microphone a little bit away from your face, it'll help my ears.
Okay.
And Jennifer, the Elmo's not switching, so you might need to click it on and off real quick. There we go.
Is this okay?
Yes.
This, oh, okay, all right. So I was saying that the third redesign does not address our most important concerns. The building is still incompatible with the structures on Alberta Way. Consider, compare the size of it with the commercial development across the street. At 31,000 square feet, it is less than half the size of the proposed building. Las Casitas is 26,000 square feet, one-third the size of the proposed building. Pueblo de los Gatos is just over 55,000 square feet. The two Commons buildings that face the street are only about 10,000. At the end of the street, the two office buildings, at 56,000, are screened off from the street by a nine-and-a-half-feet wall and tall evergreens. The proposed building is 315 square feet, 315 feet long. It's a straight, monotonous building that does not look like it belongs on Alberta Way. Look at Las Casitas, one pop out after another, and a very dynamic design. And this is Pueblo de los Gatos, actually two wings, two main wings placed vertically on the lot with sections projecting out at different angles. Again, a very dynamic design. The Commons consists of 10 buildings spread out. The two facing the street are placed at different angles. Here is the same sense of movement and dynamism. This is 485 Alberta Way, identical to 475. Now, the proposed building blocks our treasured view corridor on the north part of the site. We have lost already the view of the mountains on the south side. This is our most prized view, calming, restorative. From the west sidewalk, you see the hillsides, ridge lines, and a peak. We walk on the street and look at the view regularly, men-
Let me stop you, let me stop you. The time is up.
Okay. Here was my, I lost a couple of seconds there with the microphone. This is my last photograph.
Go ahead, go ahead.
It shows that what happens when the story poles are filled in by the building. Look what we have left. You know, it's really soul-crushing. If you walk further south, you don't see much of that ridge at all. If you walk back towards the north property line, you see a little more. But this photo is taken from the center there of that view corridor, and we want to keep it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's going to come up second? Okay.
My name is Marietta Reine, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Los Gatos Commons. We oppose a two-level underground garage at 405 Alberta Way. NGO ignored the general plan policy that called for assessment of the effects of excavation on neighboring properties. That concerned the residents of Alberta Way, so we hired our own expert, Dr. Peter Geisler from San Francisco. He has two PhDs. He taught at University of California and has headed Geisler Engineering for 30 years. His expertise is in hydrology and liquefaction and soil subsidence in differential foundation buildings. I'm not going to go any further than that in talking about the soil composition, since that's something that Mr. Middlestat already covered and I hope to save some time. He's also highly regarded in his field. If you want, Google his name, and you would be amazed. He reviewed NGO's report, Appendix C. As you know, he advised against a two-level garage built below the water table on this site, that it would put the neighboring properties at risk. Dr. Geisler found that a one-level garage would pose significantly, significantly less problem for neighbors. So please give Dr. Geisler's very dynamic and thoughtful presentation a second look. On the defense now, NGO would only admit to a low risk to neighbors where a two-level garage was concerned. Dr. Geisler had no chance to debate the issue. We were shocked and disappointed that AMEC Foster Wheeler did not attempt to objectively assess the two points of view, Geisler's and NGO's, in their letter. We draw your attention to the recent developments in Palo Alto. Where the possible negative impact of dewatering on neighboring properties is taken very seriously, three of our developments on Alberta Way are closer than 40 feet to the proposed project. We also point out that there is no precedent for a two-level underground garage on the floodplain in Los Gatos. We do not think there is a one-level underground garage there either on the floodplain. At the Commons, most people are, are on fixed incomes, and any repairs to pipes or slabs would be the residents' responsibility, and think of the disruption of our lives. So we oppose a two-level underground garage at 405 Alberta Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. So I guess I'll have Ms. Basham now?
Yes.
Greetings. My name is Marilyn Basham, and I live at the Los Gatos Commons. Redesign three did have some positive features, but these affected only a small amount of people. I'm going to speak to the major changes that need to happen in order for there to be a win-win both for the developer and for the residents. The history for these changes goes back to August 24, 2016, when the Commissioner Erickson suggested a redesign for the project between 55,000 to 63,000 square feet. The design of 74,270 square feet was not seriously considered. At that time, the residents had asked for a project size of 45,000 square feet, but we did not get support. So we residents, using the petition process, have decided three main principles that follow the Commissioner's directions and meets the residents' concerns. One, reduce the square footage between 55,000 to 63,000 square feet. Two, bring in a one-level underground garage. Three, protect the existing public views of the Santa Cruz Mountains with an 80-foot setback on the north property line. So what would that look like? Here's an idea. You can see two buildings, 28,000 square feet each, at the narrow end is 90 feet wide, and those narrow end would be on the street side, so as you walk by, it would break up the facade. There's a pedestrian walkway between the two, walk, between the two buildings. Also, you can see that there would be plenty of, of parking space on the south side, as well as the in front, and so they'd only really need, now with a reduced size, a one-level garage. The echo, the plan echoes the Pueblo de los Gatos, two wings totaling 55,000 square feet, and the 475, 485, two buildings totaling 56,000 square feet. The pattern blends with the neighborhood. Most important, the 80-foot setback on the north property line would protect the existing views of the Santa Cruz Mountains. Here's a drone picture of the existing property, and you can see that the existing buildings have a protected view corridor. That is provided by that 80-foot setback on the north property line. So the best scenario, reduce the size to 56,000 square feet, bring in a one-level underground garage, and protect the existing public views of the Santa Cruz Mountains. Thank you.
Any questions?
Yeah. Oh.
There aren't, so thank you very much. I think what we're going to do is take another five-minute break. I will say this, for good reasons for taking the break, but also, one of the Commissioners has a very bad back, and so I like to take five-minute breaks every hour, hour and a half. So that's what we'll do. We'll try to, try to keep it to five minutes. All right. We'll start now again. I'm going through a number of cards we have. So Jean Jones is next.
Good evening. I'm Jean Jones and I live at 443 Alberta Way. I'm the current president of the Los Gatos Commons HOA. We residents of Los Gatos Commons are proud of our homes. We are taxpayers who vote. Shop in local stores, enjoy the many restaurants in the area, the library, the senior center. We attend many events in town and volunteer for many causes. We are active senior citizens. We have submitted a petition to the planning commission pertaining to the proposed development at 401 409 Alberta Way with the following three principles, which you have already heard. A building less than 62,000 square feet. The underground garage be only one level or all above ground if possible. Protect our existing view of the mountains from the west sidewalk. The petition was signed by an overwhelming majority of the residents. The petition was supported by the boards of directors of the Los Gatos Commons, Pueblo de los Gatos and Las Casitas, and is signed by the majority of residents at Belavista Village. The residents of Alberta Way don't receive any benefit from the proposed development, only loss. Loss of view, loss of quality of life, and loss to the ability to come and go on Alberta Way when we need to or want to. There has not been an objective study of how this proposed building would actually affect businesses in Los Gatos. Much of the recent decline in business is due to online shopping, heavy downtown and Highway 17 traffic, and competition from restaurants in Campbell. The proposed building would not solve any of these problems. This is a commercial building and commercial design guidelines apply. And many general plan policies also apply. The commercial design building is required to be compatible with the residential neighborhood policies. And that applies to the commercial buildings. Support for the project is not coming from Alberta Way residents. It seems to be coming from people outside the area who do not live on Alberta Way. We ask you, the planning commission, to direct the developer to reduce the building size to less than 62,000 square feet. We would like 56. Building a one-level underground garage at the most and use setback of 80 feet on the north property line to protect our view. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next. Does she have a question? Nobody did. Next card I have is for Carol Rosenberg.
Good evening. My name is Carol Rosenberg. I own a condo at the Los Gatos Commons and I'm on the board of directors. The senior community on Alberta Way is worried about the effects of the new design that it could have on us. Seniors constitute half of the adult population on Alberta Way. And at the commons, 75% of us are over 70. We hope the general plan policies regarding seniors will be followed. The presence of seniors on Alberta Way shapes the character and sense of place. The commons offers below-market condos for seniors and is the only senior residence in Los Gatos where seniors can own their own units. Others have spoken about the view. We lost our view and most of us have no mountain view from our units. We look forward to walking up the sidewalk for an inspirational look at the hillsides, ridge lines, and mountain peaks. Traffic delays could potentially cost lives. As an example, one of our residents, Mrs. Kathy Figueroa, became short of breath one day and passed out. Her neighbor witnessed this and called 911. The EMR arrived in five minutes and saved her life. The emergency room doctor told Mrs. Figueroa that had the EMR arrived even two minutes later, she would be dead. Thank you.
Questions? Thank you very much. The card I have is for Raylene McDonald.
These are the ones. Thank you. I think I'll do it this way. Good evening. My name is Colleen McDonald. I live at the commons and I'm also a member of the board of directors. I'm going to address traffic issues. The introduction of 298 vehicles on Alberta Way during the morning and the evening rush will have a negative impact on our neighborhood. This diagram will show you the driveways of the proposed project. Those are in blue, coming down. And then the ones in red represent other driveways. The one directly across at the commercial center, the ones at Pueblo de los Gatos and Las Casitas. Residents will have a more difficult time getting out in the morning with 300 cars going into 405. Plus 100 cars going down the street to the Alberto Oaks at 475 and 485. In the evening, there will be a queue at the intersection as cars from the project and Alberto Oaks attempt to get out. Residents will experience significant delays. We think that this narrow dead-end street is not the right spot for a huge office building. And we do not think that the Hexagon Study correctly characterized the problems here. For one thing, thank you, my helper. After the Hexagon Study was completed, the Alberto Oaks was renovated. The cars went from 36 to over 100. If you counted the cars here, there'd be 103 in this photo. There are nine businesses at 475 and four more at 485. Thus, 100 more cars. As Gary Black admitted to the planning commission in an earlier hearing, the statistical average used to compute the LOS, Level of Service, does not reflect the lived experience. The ITE manual used by Hexagon to determine trips generated used data, much of which was very old. The authors admitted that due to the changes in the way people do business now, there could be significant differences pre and post. She put it up. Thank you. Currently, the largest two-story office building in Los Gatos is 750 University Avenue. It's a busy street dominated by commercial structures. This is a very different situation than a single-access Alberta Way with a narrow, primarily residential street. Does this make sense to put a 74,000-square-foot building with the associated 300 cars there? We don't think so. Please consider further the traffic implications. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much. Next card I have is Harold Vitale.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Harold Vitale. I'm a resident at Los Gatos Commons on the board of directors. Lived in Los Gatos for 40 years, something like that. I'll express my opinion that the proposed building development plan for 405 Alberta Way be rejected. And I'll focus mainly on what I'd call three flaws. Other descriptions you've heard today. And I'll try not to get into those. So the three items that I'll address will be briefly, the two-level underground parking garage, congested traffic, I'll spend most of my time on that, and credibility of the planning, which is not stable. I don't believe this is the last iteration on the plan. First of all, two-level underground parking garage, I'll just make one point here. In the event of an automobile fire in that garage, there's going to be, there's a lot of noxious fumes that are emitted as plastic burns. And even if there's a sprinkler system in there, that doesn't protect an under-the-hood or in-the-cabin fire. The car by design is made that way to keep water out of it. But I'm concerned about that. And then there will be fumes that would escape from under the hood, down and out. And ventilation system would be good for that. But if it's a disaster and power's out, that's off. Congested traffic. Let me tell you, I was very concerned about congested traffic. So I decided to do an analysis on my own. And my concern was primarily about, at the end of the day, when the office workers are leaving, that poses a real threat for a large traffic jam, in my opinion. So I tried to do an analysis of that. And the schematic that I want to use is this one. This one down here.
Sir, you need to take the mic with you. Everything's being lost.
Okay. I'm not going to talk about this one. This is, when I heard about the new information on a right-hand turn lane, I thought, hey, that's a good idea. Let me look into that, too. I wasn't sure that was going to really stick. I don't think it's been approved by Caltrans yet. Okay, so here's what you've seen in picture form. And my analysis is based on a couple of simple things. If you observe traffic, cars, when it's dense, tend to follow each other. So we can model this with just cars that are traveling at speed limits, no greater than the posted speed limits, and a constant delay. That means one car slows down, the preceding ones slow down. So I think it's a pretty reasonable model. Here's the biggest problem that I see besides a lot of cars. At this intersection, that's a real congestion point. That's leaving the proposed parking garage and trying to merge with the other traffic coming down. So that generates a delay. And it's not much, but when you get hundreds of cars, they all add up. I guess I'm out of time, so.
When the red light comes on, then you're out of time.
Okay.
Now you're out of time.
Well, thanks for listening.
We have a question of you.
Yes, sir.
So Commissioner Hughes.
Yeah, thank you. The information that you presented in that chart and graph, has that been provided to the commission? I haven't had the chance to go through that. Is that been provided and is that a current version that's been provided to the commission?
No, it isn't. I can do that.
I would appreciate that. We can still accept that information. So if you could provide that, that would be helpful.
I had a whole hum crasher on the wait times at these various points. And they get up in two minutes.
That would be helpful if you could provide that information to us. Thank you.
So if you give a copy of that to Jennifer, then we can make a copy and give it back to you?
Oh, you can have it. Except my computer broke just before I started over and so it's pretty scratchy.
She'll make copies for us.
Let me give you these two sheets because that tells you what the delays.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next card I have is Beverly Bryant.
Good evening, members of the planning commission. My name is Beverly Bryant. I live at 16940 Placer Oaks Road. I've been in the community for 31 years. I speak tonight in support of the application for 401 409 Alberta Way and request that you grant approval to demolish the existing office buildings and permit the construction of a two-story office building with underground parking on the site. This afternoon, I took a walk, took the time to walk the site, actually, as much as I could anyhow, and to look at the story poles and consider the condition of the existing one-story office building that's located there right now. I also watched the review of the project that was conducted by the city council in early October, actually live, and have read the documents in the staff report that was proposed in preparation for tonight. And all of this information reinforces my opinion that this is a good project for the town of Los Gatos. And my request is that you approve its construction. Los Gatos has a very limited amount of office space and permission for office space to build. This is one of the few sites in town that's still available for that. The fact that it's a 74,000-square-foot building is important. Class A office is important. And to get the tenants that need to come into the building, they have to be a certain size. The current building, as you know, is well beyond its useful life. Constructed in the mid-'50s, 50 years ago, poor repair. I was pointed, as was pointed out by Mr. Holt, who's president of, maybe currently president of, the Chamber of Commerce. Los Gatos is really in need of commercial development of some sort. We have a tax base that's somehow eroding in the downtown area. And further, I really believe that people who work in this building will contribute to the sales tax and revenue of the town. Think about the gas that they might buy on Los Gatos Boulevard, or that they might take lunches and, you know, any place downtown or along the Boulevard. The site's certainly suitable for office use and it's a high-quality project. I was very impressed with the builders saying that they'd go to lead gold, which is a high standard to meet. They've increased these setbacks. They've got open space. They've got parking for others on site. View glass is a real big addition and the underground parking, of course. I understand the concerns of the neighbors very much in terms of the construction period and the difficulties. Placer Oaks Road was impacted about 18 months ago or a couple of years ago. We had one development, Placer Oaks Court on one end and the Phil's Coffee Veterinary Site on the other end. And for about a year and a half, it was pretty busy there. I live in the middle of the street, so I understand that. When it goes away, the conditions that your organization and you, yourself as planners, put on the developer when they build are really restrictive and important. And I can guarantee you that you'll be pleased with the results. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next one I have is Craig Steen.
Hello. My name's Craig Steen and I don't live in the commons. I live about two blocks away from the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Highway 9. Commuted down through there for about 30 years now. I've been a resident. And I guess I have to say that most of us by now have experienced the epiphany of traffic nightmares, as we realize development explosion in the Bay Area, which is up to 7 million now, and in our own town, is creating a little bit of havoc. In fact, if you look at Highway 9 and Los Gatos Boulevard and then Alberta Way, it oftentimes backs up in the afternoons, actually in the morning, too. So remembering that the ingress and egress for Highway 17, there are only really two main areas, Lark and Highway 9 East Los Gatos where this is going to come out. And to add that traffic in there right now just does not make sense. And I really feel sorry, too, for the pedestrians. My wife and I don't even try to walk across on the sidewalk anymore because of the fact that the on-ramp and the off-ramp from 17 come right through there. If you've ever, those of you that have driven through there probably would notice that. It's really dangerous because it's off of a curve. So again, by adding traffic in there, we're just totally making a problem worse. To me, also compounding all of this right now, and you may say, well, how does this deal with this, is our state legislators. Evan Low, our assembly person, and Mr. Beal, our state senator, have all championed high-density growth and limiting public input. And when I called their offices concerning this kind of development, they said, what do you mean? You don't want to see more development in your town? And I said, no. They were incredulous. They couldn't believe it. They don't live here. They don't deal with the traffic. They don't know that Los Gatos Boulevard cannot be widened anymore. We've got what we've got. And now with, of course, North 40 or North 20, plus 20, it's going to even get worse. I'd also like to direct your attention to the, I thought it was really good myself, was the Los Gatos Magazine, September 17th, where the author chronicles what is said to be necessary commercial development. And in that, if you'll recall, they were going to demolish a square block bounded by Bean, Masal, Tate, and Nicholson, so they could build two 50-foot apartment buildings. And this was going to contribute to the tax base, et cetera, of Los Gatos. And I'm just going to read this very quickly. Fortunately, the misguided vision was never realized and the corner of Bachman, Masal, looks much different today than it might have under the urban renewal. And we can thank Ms... And we can thank Sandy Becker, I was just remembering what she, coming in here back then, and of course, our own Barbara Spector, for stopping this sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next card I have is for Sherri Burke.
Hi, my name is Sherri Burke, and I am a resident at 420 Alberta Way, directly across from the proposed development. While the size of the development has decreased, I still feel it's too large and massive for this site and will overwhelm the neighborhood. It replaces a commercial space that's only 31,000 square feet and space that generates way less traffic than projected for this development. The proposed size is still more than two times the existing structure. The developer says the town council directed them to reduce the size to 74,000 square feet. But as I recall, the council members were not willing to approve a resolution that stipulated this size. And those members that thought this size was sufficient were not able to get a majority ruling. I hope you see it that way as well. I feel this proposal creates a traffic nightmare, not only for residents of Alberta Way, but all who travel on Highway 17, Highway 9, and Los Gatos Boulevard. Trip generation counts show the existing buildings would generate 331 daily trips, with the newest redesign generating 820, about two and a half times the amount of traffic. Alberta Way is a fairly short street with only one way in and one way out. To bring that much traffic onto the street is just too much. The developer will dedicate a portion of the site for the purpose of widening Alberta Way, allowing for an extended right-turn lane onto Highway 9. That's great, and will help get cars out of their building and on their way. Wonderful for their tenant and their employees. But what about the residents who may be stuck behind their cars trying to enter on Alberta Way while they turn left into the property, or stuck waiting to, while they exit out of the garage? Perhaps they also need to dedicate a portion of their site for the purposes of widening Alberta Way to provide a left-turn lane into all entrances to their property to further alleviate traffic bottlenecks and backups in front of their development on Alberta Way, as well as preserve existing residential on-street parking. On-street parking is shrinking in many residential areas of Los Gatos and needs to be preserved. It's been argued that the location, being close to the freeway, is reason to allow something to be built there that would generate more traffic. However, this part of the freeway is and has been a bottleneck for many years, and the surface streets from the freeway to the development are also bottlenecked many times of the day. There is not a plan in place to alleviate the traffic pressure to Highway 17 or Highway 9 and Los Gatos Boulevard anytime soon, and this just increases the traffic even more. The development is supposed to house less than 400 employees, but we've heard there are numerous office buildings that cram twice that number in the same space. Is this project going to have a stipulation that the maximum number of employees can't exceed the number of parking spaces? Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And I have another Burke, Bob Burke.
Okay, I'm Bob Burke. I live at 420 Alberta Way. That's the Pueblo de Los Gatos. When I first met with land partners about the development, I told them that, of course, we'd love to see a brand-new building across the street. I'm here to ask that you approve only a design that doesn't hugely deteriorate our quality of life on Alberta when it's occupied. The current design does fail to conform to the 2020 general plan and commercial design guidelines. The environmental impacts we identified have not been addressed, and we ask that you deny it in favor of a revised design that doesn't harm the Alberta Way residents. And to that, having said that, I've got a couple of slides that I'd like to show you. This one shows what the impact would be on view improvement if the one-story north building design were to be put in place that was mentioned by John Middlestead. The area, from the area where the center entrance is, if it were one-story all the way, one-story on the right-hand building, the north building, the view improvement of the mountains would be substantial, especially if these trees in the right-of-way, the 17 right-of-way were trimmed or removed so that the mountains in the distance could be seen as a result. And I'd like to just ask a rhetorical question at this point. What view shall be preserved when developments are placed going forward? Should it be the view that is in place today? That that was in place when the general plan was written? That was in place in the '50s? We think that view preservation can include view expansion. Now, I'd like to make one last presentation. This would deal with the traffic by changing the entrance to the property to have employees who arrived from 17 make a U-turn, take a drive, an extra lane or two that would be put in place in the Highway 9 right-of-way into an entrance to the underground garage on this side of the property.
Your time is up.
Thank you. And then the exits could be over here.
Okay, thank you. All right, the next card I have is Randy, I think it's Chen. I hope it's Jen.
Hi, I'm Randy Chen. I live at 118 Edelen Avenue, and I represent the Los Gatos Chamber of Commerce tonight. I would like to present a number of arguments in favor of adding Class A office space at 405 Alberta Way in Los Gatos. The Alberta Way property is Zone CH, which is intended for vehicular-oriented uses and sales along highway frontages. Office space is one of the permitted uses for this lot. This project would add badly-needed Class A office space to Los Gatos. According to Colliers, for most of 2017, there was zero available Class A office space in Los Gatos. Currently, we have only about 10,000 square feet available for rent, which is probably about the size of this building. As we presented to council in September, the Chamber of Commerce sent a survey to the downtown businesses and our members asking if Class A office space half a mile from downtown would bring increased revenue to their business. 67 responded it would benefit their businesses. We also asked their opinion regarding the shuttle service that the developers are offering. 58% agreed it would be a boon to their business. And 90% of the survey respondents were in favor of the project. In light of the council meeting last night, where community vitality was one of the priorities for the coming year, the chamber believes that this project is a good beginning in revitalizing the surrounding areas. A community shuttle was mentioned by each council member. This project is offering us a shuttle. In addition, the 300 employees, or 298, who will work in this building will utilize services, merchants, and restaurants downtown and along the Boulevard. Sure, employees bring their lunches, but there are times when we forget our lunch, meet a friend for lunch, thus bringing business to our food establishments. In addition, these employees will need to run errands, get a birthday gift, or pick up dinner on the way home, and will frequent our Los Gatos businesses. The project now meets the CEQA recommendation in the EIR for square footage and complies with the zoning requirements. Chamber believes that this additional Class A office space will be a great economic benefit for our town and the businesses we represent. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one question here. One question, we have a question. Ms. Chen, when you say you represent the Chamber of Commerce, are you representing the Board of Directors?
Yes.
Per their request, you're here?
Yes, I sent my speech to our president, and she approved it.
Ms. Rice, thank you very much. All right, thanks again. The next card I have, it looks like Dixon Fang.
Hi, I'm Dixon Fang. I'm a resident of Alberto, Los Gatos Commons. A lot of things has been said by my neighbors. But one thing confused me and bothered me a lot. That is, in the third iteration, the developer put a dog park in the whole thing. I don't know what kind of idea is that. I know the commercial building has to homogenize or accommodate in the neighbor, peaceful coexistence. But is that the way to do it? Put a dog park in front of us? And it's a Class A type of building, supposed to have prestige. But let's not consider IBM or anything. Even Netflix, that they mentioned, do they want a dog park in front of? Or just drag more dog owners to that place? The traffic's already so bad. So I don't know. It really bothers me. And considering I have been here several times, and this one iteration after the other, and the developer keep up putting up new things out, this time it's a dog park. And I don't know what's the real motive and intention. Don't tell me, two years from today, after the building is built, that nobody going to use the dog park. They sneak in as a parking lot or some outdoor activity, make the place even worse. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Kemp. That's the last card. I think so.
Hi there, I'm Melanie Kemp. I live at 174 Cuesta de los Gatos Way. I'm part of the Bella Vista Townhomes at the very end of Alberta Way, directly across the street from the Los Gatos Commons. I was elected last year to be the spokesperson for those 47 townhouses. And I want to just piggyback on what the other comments have been here this evening, and also to respond also to Commissioner Hudes and Commissioner Kane, who have suggested that they'd like to investigate one-level parking garage a little more thoroughly. As you can see by a lot of the speakers who've spoken here tonight, there's a lot of reinforcement from our neighbors here to want to reduce the size, scale, mass of this building, and most specifically, to reduce some of the traffic on this street that would be coming from this building. At the Bella Vista Village, we definitely feel that 298 cars coming and going in the morning and the evening is going to be a problem. I also would suggest to you that a community bus, holding maximum 37 people, that is going to loop through the town every 45 minutes or so, between the hours of 10:30 and 5:30, is going to do nothing to mitigate for any, to any considerable degree, the traffic, certainly that the students would use. They're going to be coming to school before 10:30 in the morning. And believe me, by 3:30 in the afternoon, they've blown way off that Los Gatos High School campus. So it's going to do nothing for student traffic. If you've only got 37 seats on that bus, I mean, if you've got over 300 people in the building, for sure. We've got 300 parking spaces. You know there's going to be more than 300 people. What person is going to be able to count on that to get away for a lunch break? That bus is going to get loaded up quickly. I can walk to downtown Los Gatos in 15, 16 minutes. So it doesn't behoove any of the neighbors there to try to take the community bus. So I'm asking you to please not pay too much attention to these cookies that the developer is throwing to this Planning Commission, meeting after meeting. First, it was the community bus. Then it was picnic tables that were offered to the public that we're never going to use, and we've told them so. And now it's a dog park. You know, thank you, but no thank you. We do look forward to Class A office building. We do want the tax base increased in Los Gatos. We appreciate that. We just don't want it all to be concentrated on that one project in Alberta Way. Let's spread this a little bit here. We want a really good Class A office building. We want it reasonable. We want a good-looking building. We support that very much. We just want to support, the idea's already here, put out by the Commissioner Hudes and Commissioner Kane, that we really should investigate the one-level parking garage. Secondly, we would really like to ask the attorney here why they won't address specifically the questions raised by Rachel Hallett Mansfield in her letter. And also, please ask you to go back and reexamine that Peter Geisler soils report that the commission before was so very, very impressed with. Thank you.
We have one question here.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Kane. When you walk to town, how do you get there?
I come up Alberta Way, and I can do a loop that goes up to Los Gatos Boulevard, down Main Street, come up University, and be back to my house in 35 minutes. That's a long way.
You take LGB. You don't cross 17.
If I want to go just to downtown, the fastest way for me is to come up Alberto, up Highway 9, and down University. And I can beat it all town in 16 minutes.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks again. And I believe that would conclude all the cards. Have you submitted a card? Would you come up, please? I don't see your card, but you can just tell us who you are, and maybe I'll look again and find it. No, that's prior, yeah.
My name is Louis Darrow, and I'm a resident. I'm a homeowner on Alberta Way. We've gone through three iterations of this where I've been here. And I didn't know any of my neighbors, you know? And now, a diverse group of older people, younger people, men, women, everybody, has come here. And everybody has a similar comment and complaint. Nobody's complaining about the fact we want development. We want it smart. And here, the complaints have ranged from adding to the traffic problems, which are horrendous, adding a huge mass on a one-way, one-way-in street with a lot of people who have a lot of special services. And this is consistent. Three times, you've got 40, 50 people commenting on the same comments. Now, as a planning board, you're representing people. We have a building with mass. It doesn't represent the neighborhood. You took out a bunch of buildings that had building fabric, social fabric. There were architects' firms, copy centers, law firms. People in the neighborhood can interact with these buildings. Yeah, they were aged, but there was an interaction. You create a big, massive, 72,000-square-foot building, and it has no relationship to any neighbors. It was pointed out, there is nothing positive to be gained by any of the neighbors. Everything has been negative. The view is blocked. The traffic is bad. Underground parking is added to it. The scale of the building is ridiculous. It's out of scale. I think the architect did a very good job scaling this down. But you know what? I'm going to leave you with one image. Forget LEED Gold, because that's a sales pitch from a developer. LEED Gold gives these people in the room absolutely nothing, you know? You've got service vehicles, they haven't talked about all the service vehicles that are going to come into services building, janitorial, supplies, loading, food. I've worked for a high-tech company, and people don't bring their lunch and bags, nor do they go out. It's all catered in. It doesn't go out to downtown. They don't have enough time to do that. I'm going to leave you with one comment. We looked at Loretta's print, and you saw, we talked about story poles. They put story poles up on the site. They take them down. If you can all just shut your eyes for a second and visualize what Loretta put up there, you saw the mass. Story poles don't tell a story. She showed the mass of a building. It doesn't work. It blocks out everything. And you can all visualize that mass when she colored it in black, and that's the way it's supposed to look. And that's what it's going to look like to us when we go down the site at night. So I hope you can all do your jobs and really take into effect what all the community is saying here. The community that lives there, not the community who is here to talk about the downtown development and how much money it's going to bring into downtown. That's great, and we want to support everything that's going to support Los Gatos. This is going to destroy it. It's going to destroy the community fabric, and I hope you guys can appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, unless there's somebody else I missed, I think we're finished with the input of the public. And now we can go back to the applicant, and you have five minutes.
Can I get the presentation back up before you start the floor? Oh, you got it, I'm sorry. Thank you. I appreciate the fact that so many of the residents want to see Class A development. But I just have to say, there's many people in the room that don't seem to understand what that entails. The alternative suggested by the neighbors, two buildings, fifty-six thousand square feet, is not a feasible Class A development. The floor plates will be too small, they'll be fourteen thousand square feet, it won't lease. There's no developer that's going to develop that property, develop that type of project on this site, because it simply isn't feasible from an economic standpoint. What I'm, what I think we're hearing is that the neighbors kind of want what's there now to remain, because they just keep driving back down to kind of what's there. So, I want to talk about the single-level garage issue. A single-level garage is not feasible to support the square footage of the project. Even if we were to push the single-level garage all the way out to the perimeter of the site, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, it wouldn't support enough parking to be able to park for this square footage. And I did want to make one other point. We, our firm has designed numerous underground garages that go into the water table. It's done on a very common basis. We have a project right now in downtown Mountain View that's being developed by Sabato Development. They're actually going to move into it as their headquarters. That garage is going three levels down into the water table. There is a hundred-year-old Saint Joseph Church that's right adjacent to the property. We put GPS sensors on the church, and it hasn't moved even a fraction of an inch. So, it is completely feasible to engineer, to properly engineer a garage that goes into the water table and not cause any disruption to adjacent sites, no differential settlement. If I'd been designing garages that did that, I would have been sued and lost my license a long time ago. So, we do have engineers here from NGO who can refute the report generated by Dr. Geisler. With all due respect to him, he's not a geotechnical engineer. He's not licensed as a geotechnical engineer. Let's talk about views, real quick. So here you can see the revised design, and you can clearly see that the views of the mountains are preserved over the top of the building, as well as we've created a much, a much more generous view corridor on the north side of the, of the property. I want to go back to this diagram. The existing, excuse me, the existing building that is on-site right now is all the way out here on Alberto Way. The footprint of the existing building is all the way out here on Alberto Way. So, we're actually improving views by demolishing that building and pushing the building further back, because you can't see the mountains through that building right now on Alberto Way. So, there is some trade-offs with respect to the views. But we think in general, the views are being preserved across the board when you look at what we're taking away versus what we're adding. I want to talk a little bit about the comment about the cars. People keep talking about how we're adding three-hundred cars to this, to the development. We're not adding three-hundred cars, that's offset by the cars that are there now. So, it's actually a much smaller number that's actually being added. And the dog park, last comment on the dog park was, the dog park was something that was suggested during the council meeting. So, we don't have to build the dog park, we can create whatever amenity space the neighbors think would be appropriate. It could just be a place to come and sit and relax. The dog park was something that we thought the town favored, so that's why we offered it up. That's it, I'm happy to answer any questions, and we have more experts here that can answer questions as well.
Let me take an opportunity to ask you some questions. I'm looking at Exhibit A zero, zero-one, just so I can get a frame of reference. Tell me how many buildings are in the plan as proposed? How many discreet buildings?
You mean the current design that's proposed now?
Right.
One.
Okay, so, when you look at it, which is the way you designed it, it looks like there are multiple buildings. But there is one connected building, is that right?
Correct.
So, and the total square footage of both floors and the total building is?
Seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty.
And you're saying that anything less than seventy-four thousand will not work, is that right?
It's going to be much more difficult to lease a building that's smaller than thirty-five thousand square foot per floor, correct?
Thirty-five thousand square feet, give or take, it's seventy thousand square feet.
Right, well.
You're saying close enough that, yeah.
Pardon me? Thirty-seven thousand, excuse me.
That works out the math. Okay, I just wanted to get that down in my, in my head. So, are there questions? Vice Chair Kane?
We're talking about Class A, and I don't...
Oh, did we want to, did we want to?
Yeah, we have a question.
Sure, make use of your time.
That's fine.
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Oriya Liahu. I'm with NGO Incorporated, and we're the geotechnical engineer for the project. And just wanted to address a couple of items that had been brought up. First of all, NGO is a forty-six-year-old firm founded here in the Bay Area and always had its headquarters here. Over the years, we've done thousands of projects in the Bay Area, many of them with basements, many of them with high groundwater, with thankfully flawless results on that count. There was concern brought up about off-site impacts due to dewatering. First of all, the soils here are not susceptible to consolidation due to drawdown of groundwater. These are just not compressible soil types that are susceptible to that. Second, the ground undergoes fluctuations in groundwater elevation routinely, and the extent to which the groundwater would be depressed during the construction, and only during the construction, is less than the natural fluctuations as well.
That light went red, but we took some of your time by asking questions. It'll take another minute.
All right. Right, so essentially, we've considered all of these things. And it has, and as has been mentioned, and as we've all observed, building basements in proximity to adjacent structures is routine. We have active projects now, we have a project in Oakland with six levels of basement, immediately adjacent to not only other buildings, but indeed historic buildings that really need to be protected and are themselves substandard. And so, there's a proven science in doing this, as you can imagine. We see this all the time in urban areas. And so, we know how to safeguard against those things. And I'll be happy to answer questions as well, I know time is limited.
Commissioner Hudes has a question.
I know this question's going to make me popular with my fellow Commissioners. Could you explain the Palo Alto dewatering guidelines? They appear to be new guidelines. Why wouldn't they apply? Why wouldn't they be appropriate for this project?
Yeah. We don't know all of the considerations that went into the Palo Alto guidelines. Some of it seems to be motivated by water quantity concerns during times of drought and availability for watering. Fundamentally, the reason they wouldn't apply is because soil types are different everywhere. And the soil types here, these clayey gravels, are not susceptible, they're not compressible within a range that would be represented by the, by the dewatering. Specifically, when groundwater is, is depressed, when it's pulled down, it increases the effective stresses over the zone where it's, where it's pulled down. And if you have compressible soils that have never experienced those stresses in their history, they would be susceptible to consolidation under those increased effective stresses. I don't want to get too technical here. That's not the case here. On two counts, that's not the case here. Number one, these aren't those types of soils. And number two, these soils that are here routinely experience increased stress levels as a result of depression of groundwater. It's a natural phenomenon, and indeed, as has been pointed out, at the times that we can, at the time we conducted our borings, the groundwater was indeed much deeper. And so, those soils have, have routinely experienced those stress levels and have already done what they're going to do as a result of those increased stress levels.
There's a follow-up to that, if I may. Have you read the Palo Alto guidelines?
I have.
And they seem to relate to the report, the report provided by a professional engineer, and then trigger certain actions based on that. That seems to be a little different than what you've said. In other words, you've said that the soils are different than what's referenced in their report. But, and when I read their report, it says, "conducted geotechnical study to determine the radius of influence." And based on that, then, then there's certain dewatering that should, should apply based on that report. Is that, and you don't agree with that?
No, we don't disagree with that for Palo Alto. Again, the, the objective has to be defined. If the objective is to prevent off-site impact or to prevent impact in proximity to the dewatering location, what we're saying is that the dewatering contemplated here to achieve the excavation that is necessary for the garage is such that it will neither increase the stress state of the soils off-property to a greater extent than Mother Nature already has, nor will it cause consolidation because of the soil type. Part of the objective with the Palo Alto policy is, is to reduce the amount of groundwater withdrawn for other reasons. Not because of off-site impact so much, but because of water quantity reasons. And that's stated in the early part of that policy.
And those don't apply in Los Gatos?
Well, I, I think that those apply anywhere, but the volumes that we're talking about here are probably minimal compared to the groundwater regime as a whole.
Okay. You've, you've come across this Palo Alto guidelines before. They've, are other municipalities adopting similar guidelines to this? Or is Palo Alto the only place that, that does this at all?
I'm not aware of any other town that has that policy. And I have only seen that in the last few days.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
So, one of the, one of the residents brought up the idea of doing another drilling to assess the level of the water table. So, my question is, supposing that, that their hypothesis was correct, and they actually had some charts from Santa Clara, but that the water table, given, you know, more recent rain, was, was much higher, how would that change the engineering for this project?
It wouldn't. That, it would change the amount of dewatering needed at the time of excavation. And if we were to do another boring and take a snapshot tomorrow of the groundwater elevation, all we know for sure is that it'll necessarily be different from that at the time of construction. It's not a static thing. And so, the, the dewatering that occurs for construction will be based on the groundwater elevations that are, that are present at the time of the construction. And then, following construction, the waterproofing for the basement will extend up above the highest anticipated groundwater elevation. And the groundwater will then fluctuate as it normally does. So, it, and so, the only thing that changed, none of the engineering changes. The only thing that changes is literally the volume of water that is pumped in order to accommodate the, the construction.
So, you're basically saying your, your engineering applies to any level of water table, but, but the actual amount of dewatering in the process will change?
Absolutely.
So, a related question to that is, and I think your, the architect brought this up, it was about a property that, where there was, there was an underground garage, and it was next to a church. So, it, it made me think about the, the residents nearby, assuming that this goes through with the two-level garage. Is there something we can do in terms of monitoring the condition of the nearby neighbors as the process is happening to make sure, you know, to, to be where? Because you don't want them to find out, like, down the road that, that there was cracks in the foundation. But is there a way to kind of like monitoring as the process is going on?
Yes, there are multiple techniques that would be, that would be up to the applicant. But yes, there are techniques that are surface techniques for monitoring movements. Strain gauges and other such things are available.
Okay, and is that, is that a typical practice in situations like this where the nearby, you know, the surrounding neighbors, you know, might, or businesses or whatever, might have a concern?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Typically, the monitoring that occurs is right at the top of the supportive excavation wall. There's an allowed deflection in the wall, and there's usually some monitoring that occurs, both vertical and horizontal, on that bracing, that temporary wall that holds up the excavation. And typically, that's not extended for a great distance away from the excavation. Sometimes, sometimes it is, sometimes maybe half, maybe a distance corresponding to half of the depth of the excavation horizontally. But, you know, the monitoring points can be placed anywhere.
Okay.
Practically.
So, that's very good to know, thank you.
Yes, Vice Chair Kane first?
Mr. Kirby? You said, you said that a fifty-thousand-square-foot facility couldn't handle the Class A requirements. What is, what is the minimum?
If it's, if it's broken into two buildings, as was suggested, the floor plates would be fourteen thousand, and that's just not a feasible square foot.
What is the minimum for a Class A facility?
Thirty, thirty-five to thirty-seven thousand, five-hundred square feet per floor is preferred from a leasing standpoint. So, just what we've designed, what we've designed today.
Thirty-seven thousand?
Correct.
Per floor?
Correct.
Seventy-four, as it turns out. That's the minimum. The number we have before us is the minimum for Class A?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Birch?
I think this is going to be a tag-team question, but for the benefit of all the people sitting here, I'm going to extend this conversation concerning the boring and the testing, okay? I received a copy of the original report, which unfortunately I didn't have a minute ago. But the, the field exploration for this, you did the boring on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen. I think we all know we were in the middle of a very long drought. So, I doubt there was a great deal of groundwater. If we were to go back and do the same boring, we would find more groundwater probably at a higher level, just because of the simple saturation of the creek nearby and saturation of soils. So, you guys are in this every day. We all aren't. So, what I want to understand is a couple of things. What measures that you would suggest that would allow people to feel more comfortable with that level of excavation and that type of a subterranean structure being placed? Because no matter what, we do know that the water is going to be displaced. If it was in this box, and this box doesn't exist, it has to go somewhere. How does that work? Particularly knowing we do have some, we do have a clay level within our soils, which does not compact as easily. And second, when we do construction, when you do the dewatering, especially if part of this construction takes place during winter and it's raining, where are you going to displace that water to during the construction for the pumping? So, those are the two questions, and I want you to use layman terms for everyone else sitting here.
Excellent, thank you. So, the first question is, what, what sort of comfort can we provide? I guess I would say, first of all, that all of the design work that we're doing is reviewed by the Towns Engineer, a very, very highly-regarded firm. And incidentally, we do, NGO does a lot of that work for many public agencies. And, you know, we've been involved not only in projects that have been successful, but we've done forensic work as well. So, the, the comfort is really, maybe goes back to the monitoring question. We can, we can place instruments near the excavation that can record not only displacements, movements, but also groundwater elevation. I, I think the former is much more relevant than, than the latter, because the groundwater elevations don't matter if they don't result in some movement at the surface. And so, that can, that can be accomplished. With regard to where does the water go? The water generally is discharged into the storm drain system. drain system. That's typically the contractor practice.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that, Ben? Hold on, Mr. Kirby, because I think where I'm gonna go might jump into where you're gonna go. So, during these last rainy season and when it's raining, you've got a big hole open, you're trying to de-water this. The, for example, the storm drain on my street flooded. So, do you, and I know you've got a construction management plan, what goes into Plan B as a comfort for the people? Because if you've been in that area when it rains, it does flood. So, there's gotta be a Plan B on where that water goes then, if, God forbid, we have a situation like we came upon last year.
Well, I guess I would say, first of all, that it would be unwise to plan the basement excavation at a time when flooding is a possibility. It would just be unwise for many reasons that go way beyond what we're talking about here. In the event of some unexpected flood at the time of the basement de-watering, the work couldn't be going on within the basement anyway. The pumps would be shut off anyway. The basement would become a big hole that would collect water until the work could recover. But again, it wouldn't be smart to be doing this in the middle of winter. This is the kind of thing that you do when the weather is favorable.
Can I ask one last question on this topic, and then I'll stop? Obviously, we know that we could put monitors during construction because you're overseeing this process. But I think also some of the comfort level would come, what, about two years later? So, what kind of reassurances could we get from the applicant that longer-term monitoring could go on to a time certain that would allow for that type of monitoring for the residents if this is a concern?
Yeah, so, I think the applicant can answer that, but I would just suggest that we consider, first of all, that after the basement walls are completed, the de-watering is shut off and groundwater elevations are allowed to return to their natural state, which is a fluctuating state. There would be no reason, there would be no force that would create any other impacts. It's also true that with these clay soils, these soils expand and contract with seasonal moisture cycles. And so, if we were to go look at, if we were to precisely measure elevations of foundations, particularly foundations that have been around longer than the current building codes have, we would see seasonal variations in the heights of those foundations. They move, they breathe. That's what the soils do. They expand in the winter and they contract in the summer. And so, it would be extremely difficult, it would be impossible to relate those movements to anything that's occurring on an adjacent site. Essentially, once those basement walls are built, the effect is gone, the influence is gone.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just ask a question on that, because earlier, you were talking about a Sobrato building, and you were talking about St. Joseph's. As I understood it, St. Joseph's was monitored or some kind of electronic device, which I took from whoever said it, and I can't remember who, was a continuing process, and so everybody was comfortable that St. Joseph's was not being affected by the, I forget whether it's three-story basement. So, I guess the question that I've just heard, I'm getting an answer which says, "We don't have to do that," but when it came to wherever this was, Mountain View or someplace, you did it. And I guess I'm confused by doing it in one job and not on the other.
So, on that particular project, it's a downtown environment, it's a zero-lot line parking structure, meaning it's built right out to the edge of the property line on all sides of the building, right out to the edge of Castro Street and Church Street. The adjacent church, St. Joseph Church, is a historical structure, it's over 100 years old, it's a massive structure, it's very heavy. And the garage excavation in one location is literally about 15, 20 feet away from the church. So, the city of Mountain View insisted in that particular instance that we put GPS monitors on the church to monitor it perpetually while we were doing the underground excavation to make sure there'd be no differential settlement. The shoring was designed properly, the foundation of the church wasn't affected in any way, and once the garage was constructed and all the walls were built and all the floors went in, the monitoring was terminated because, as Robert pointed out, once the garage is constructed and the de-watering is turned off, everything kind of restores itself to the way it was before you started. The garage itself just acts like the soil that was there originally, so.
Thank you, that helped me. Other questions?
Mr. Hudes?
I have some questions about the parking and the one level versus the two level. I wanted to follow up on that a little bit more. And I don't know if you will have all of this in front of you or whether it's something that you would need to provide later, but while I understand that you've done some modeling, we haven't seen the benefits of that. And so, and it does seem to be a somewhat elegant solution to some of the issues with groundwater and other things, and it's certainly one of the ideas that's come forth from the community. So, maybe I could just ask a few questions about the numbers. So, how many spaces are on the second level?
The garage is pretty much split 50/50 between the first level and the second level. 123 on the second and 137 on the first.
And?
Thirty-eight on the surface.
And how many additional spaces could be put onto surface parking?
Well, if you take a look at the drawings on the wall here, you can see that the parking garage footprint right now is larger, is still larger than the building footprint. And we've actually got a dash line that shows the extent of the building footprint over the top of the garage. So, the garage, if it was to go to one level, would literally need to be doubled in size. And there's just simply not enough room, even if we built all the way out to the property line, to create the equal amount of parking on one level. And I wanted to remind the commission, there were some other considerations in earlier meetings. One was, we didn't want to have any construction staging offsite. So, part of the reason to create the more compact garage that went down two levels is so we have a zone on the front of the property to stage construction. We don't have to dig a hole all the way to the edges of the property line. That was something neighbors were very concerned about.
Good information, you got ahead of me a little bit.
Sorry.
I was asking, how many additional spaces could be on the surface if there were trade-offs with other uses of space on the surface?
You mean on the surface of the surface parking?
How many additional surface parking?
If we were to, well, I don't, if we were to park along the north side, I don't know that we could get a double row of parking in that setback zone, because we're limited in setback even with parking from a property line.
So, if you don't have that information, maybe you could provide that to us?
Yeah, yeah, we could do that, sure.
And then, the other question would be, you were getting at a little bit, was how large would, once you've figured out what other surface parking you can do, what is the square footage of a parking area to accommodate one-level parking with the remainder? So, that would be important to understand, and then to understand how that would fit with the buildable area on the lot. So, that would be something else that I would be interested in finding out about.
Okay.
Okay. I know Commissioner Birch had some rough ideas on this. Were there other questions, maybe on this topic, that we could explore to understand the feasibility of one-level parking?
I was pretending I was an architect. So, I was also just taking a look at if we did one large footprint, underground parking plus a little bit more ground-level parking, and definitely it's fewer parking stalls. Based on what we had just been told, it also sounds like, as far as the groundwater situation goes, whether it's a smaller second-level parking garage, significantly smaller or not, in your opinion, the displacement of the groundwater issue during construction is not going to be different based on the size of the parking garage?
That's correct. We have to de-water still.
Okay.
And I should point out, the garage will be waterproofed on the outside from the moment you get to the soil on down. So, we do waterproofing all the way down, so no matter how the water table fluctuates, the water's kept out of the garage.
Right. And as the site layout is, then, kind of tag teaming on what Matthew was thinking about, we are currently, because again, depending on how this goes, you know, I have a thousand construction management questions.
We're going until 11:30. That's where we're going.
So, no thousand, that'll go longer. But, the way you have this laid out and the way this is proposed, I mean, if we're gonna wind up having more parking underground, I want to feel very confident there's not gonna be a truck in the street. I'm gonna say out loud, for the record, he's nodding yes.
Yeah, that was the purpose of creating smaller plates and going down two levels, and the reduction in square footage allows us to create the staging area on the front of the site for all the trucks to come in and park and load and come off. There will be no trucks in the street, there'll be no construction trailer in the street, none of that, it'll all be on site.
All right.
Mr. Hudes?
So, on another topic, I wanted to come back to the question I had earlier about the space added to Alberta Way and the straightening of that. And of particular interest to me was, by widening that street, is it possible to get an emergency vehicle down it even if it means going into the other lane of traffic and that type of thing? So, how much space has been added to that? Do you have that information now, or do you want to provide that to us?
I can provide it for you. I don't know exactly the exact amount of footage that we are deeding to the city and widening the street, but as I mentioned, it does accommodate two lanes and a bike lane.
And the original concern on that was not only the ability to turn, but the ability to get an emergency vehicle down that street, particularly if we were in, you know, somewhat of a gridlocked situation due to beach traffic blocking Highway Nine and also backing up over there. So, any additional information you could provide on that space and how an emergency vehicle could navigate that street?
Let me, maybe I can. If we close, and I'm gonna direct this to the attorney, because if we close public input, which is what I intend to do at 11:30, and then we're gonna come back at another date and discuss and reach a decision. I don't know exactly how we receive essentially what is further testimony.
You can close public comment, except for you're leaving this open still to ask questions of the applicant. So, that's where we are right now. Public comment is closed, except for questions for the applicant, and you can do that.
Do we have, are those the questions we identified in night?
No.
Okay, so, we're gonna have, assuming we do what I'm suggesting, and I don't make that decision, it'll be up to you, but there's no other thing we can do. We'll get a date certain for our finishing of this, and whatever questions we have, I assume would be run through staff, right? We've already identified some questions, but if somebody had a different question or fleshed out a question, I guess you can direct that to staff, and they can direct that to the applicant.
Or they would be available to ask any questions at your next one in the follow-up meeting.
It would be very helpful, however, if.
If they were ahead of time, that would be.
If we could ask the questions ahead of time, get the answers ahead of time, so when we meet, we might be in a position actually to make a decision rather than go further testimony. That would be my hope, but we're not stuck with that.
And I would say, although the oral public comment period is closed for the rest of the public, it would still be open for written comments. They could still submit any written comments after today.
So, everybody then would have an opportunity?
For written comments, yes.
Because I want to make sure it's fair, right?
And that's actually what I've been asking for, is some written comments or answers to the questions that they haven't been able to provide during the hearing.
And let's make sure, we only have a few minutes left, let's make sure, I think you've asked specific questions, and I think Mr. Kirby has, I'm sure, taken them down. So, if you have any, if anyone has any other questions, they would like a written response to, and they can fit it in within the next eight minutes, I encourage you to do so. Okay, Commissioner Hudes wasn't through, I think.
I had one on another topic, and that is whether we could see written operating parameters for the shuttle.
The shuttle, okay. And Commissioner Birch, you had something?
Obviously, I'm gonna ask for a copy of the construction plan, the construction.
It's actually. Was that part of our?
Conditions of approval.
But we have a slide, I'll be continued, it's part of our PowerPoint.
It's just one slide? Are we gonna be able to ask questions in the next one?
Why don't you, I did not understand your question, so if you were to repeat it?
There's usually a construction plan, how, not just hours and standard things, there's usually something that indicates traffic management, times, things for specific types of trucks, et cetera, that were usually provided. I want to get a copy of that.
And the answer, as I understood it, was there is already something, and you're questioning whether that would be adequate.
And I would just say that it's a standard condition of approval. We generally do not see those at this stage. That is worked out with staff. So, if you're asking for that upfront, then that's definitely.
We do have a rudimentary diagram, but it would need to become a much more detailed plan as part of the conditions of approval and the building department's in the middle.
Then, would it be acceptable to you when I get that, that, having heard some comments, and I had taken some notes before about what the residents were concerned about, I could just make some questions and send them to you about that?
Yeah, if there's specific things you want to make sure are addressed in that plan, then we can definitely add those to the condition as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
Just adding on to that, I do recall, when the council heard this, there was some discussion of that, and although the construction management plan isn't typically done until after the approval, especially with some of the issues with the, you know, the Los Gatos comments and the senior citizens and emergency access and stuff, you know, one of the suggestions that came up and wasn't formalized into a terms and conditions was, for instance, not allowing hauling during, like, morning rush hour or evening rush hour and, you know, and having it at other times of the day. I don't know how much that would help, but, you know, if you kind of just say that there's a construction management plan and you don't dig into the details, then how do you know that your concerns are gonna be addressed? So, I had the same idea. It would be nice to see some of that.
We can certainly look at whatever this is, and if we make a decision, we can also say, "Well, we would like to see that tweaked to this extent," whatever it is. So, but we won't know that till we look at what, generally speaking, the proposed management plan is. So.
Typical construction management plans do limit hours of work, and that can be all negotiated with the town and the neighbors, so that's pretty common.
Vice Chair Kane had something.
Mr. Kirby, Denzel Washington often says, explain it to me like I'm a six-year-old. My question is, what I would like in writing is the definition of Class A, and I'd like to know why it just happens to be 74,260 square feet as the minimum Class A building, which was an arbitrary number in the draft EIR, which I painfully reread today. And if it is a fair comparison, know that when the draft EIR talks about 74,200 square feet instead of 92,800 as proposed by the project, this alternative assumes construction of underground parking, likely one level, would remain feasible for the design site. So, if we have time and we can get things back in writing, I'm reading on page S8 of the draft EIR. Let's address the implication that one level would likely be feasible, and tell me why 74,260 just happens to equal the minimum Class A building.
That's the final EIR, I believe.
It's the draft, sir. This is the final, the little guy's the final.
Okay.
The draft's the big guy.
You're right. Okay, so, we should wrap up, I think, otherwise I'm gonna leave.
Well, wait.
Okay, so, thank you very much, everyone. I will now, we'll continue the matter, and give us a date certain.
January 10th is probably the soonest, and if we're not able to get all the information from the applicant, then we'll simply continue to a further date.
Okay, so, at the moment, it's January 10th. Did they hear that?
We still need a motion.
They'll get it. Yeah, we need a motion to continue the matter to January 10th.
Yes, correct. So moved.
Oral public comment.
Except by the applicant. Oral public comment is closed, questions of the applicant are still open.
Right, and we're told.
Hey, guys, we're still having a meeting!
So, yeah, what I've been told is not. So, yeah, what I've been told is, not only can they respond to our questions in writing, which we've asked them to do, but if anyone in the public wishes to submit something in writing, they can do that too. So that part is still open. I just want to make that clear. And the motion will take us to February, no, January 10.
January 10, unless.
Okay, so if we can, if we can get a motion on that?
That was my motion.
Okay, go ahead. All right, moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye aye. It passes unanimously. Thank you all.
There you go.
Now, we're going to go to your report, I believe.
Extremely briefly, the council has met twice since we last met on the 5th. They were unable to get to visibility, so they continued that to next week. They started discussing fences and continued that to a date uncertain. They began discussing ADU ordinance amendments and continued that to January, so hopefully that will be done soon. They also conducted a review of the toll house. There was a one-year review requirement, which that passed through them. And then last night, as was mentioned earlier, they went through strategic priorities last night, and so we will be going back to them in February, I believe, February 20, with more details on budget and resource constraints of the various topics they put on that list, and then they will choose which items will move forward for the remainder of the year.
Just so everybody's aware, I believe at our next regular meeting, it'll be the first meeting in January, we will be electing a chair and a vice chair.
That's correct, and then also, I just, since I probably won't see many of you, enjoy the holiday season, and we'll see you next year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, happy holidays. We're adjourned.